How are you?
Hey, hey, hey.
Yeah, hey, hey, hey.
Hey, hey.
Far away. We're, uh, we're in exile away from the...
Yeah, we don't want to be next to him anyways. He's got cooties.
Traitor.
Hi, Brandon, can you hear me?
That's why you're way away.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Do I sound clear to you?
Traitor?
Okay, perfect, thank you, bye.
Traitor, traitor, chicken dinner? Now that didn't work, does it?
She was kind, I was not.
Uh, okay, Brandon, um... Thank you, thank you. Thank you. GMP crew, GMP, uh, Aspen. 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 I think something like that. Anybody, anything else? Um, for... Update. Are we waiting for her? Here she comes. Wait. Up, down, two, yeah. And that might not be 100% accurate. Uh, yeah, I know, I spoke to them. Thank you for that. Is that lift? Well, is that? Uh, at 6:30, I'll call a meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, you're back, would you like to lead us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you all. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting, Monday, December 19th. Uh, I'll go through with an agenda review first. Uh, is there anything anybody sees on this agenda that'd like to, um, move around? And I had one that I thought I'd like to move. Uh, but if Kelly Riverio is not present online, let me ask that, can everybody... Josh, uh, you're out there, can you hear us? Joe, Joe Buble, can you hear us, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear everything fine, thank you.
Okay, can see everything good?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. So, I don't see the Riverios here, so, uh, we'll leave that, uh, agenda item alone. Anything anybody would like to adjust on the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, before I do comments from citizens, I just want to make a couple statements. First of all, thank you to the Highway crew. I know it was a long weekend for you guys. Thanks for all you did out there, the roads look great. I was out most of the weekend plowing and I could tell when I crossed the line between here and some other towns. I knew when I was in my hometown, the roads were better than anybody else's, so, thank you. And all you guys.
I just want to mention that we ran, we, power went out, kind of blocked Friday night, Highway Garage. I'm just curious where the, um, we had a generator discussion going on, I didn't know where that was at with the board.
Okay, uh, we, we can get to that in a bit, not right now. Thanks. I also want to extend a thank you to, uh, GMP and the Aspen crews. Uh, we had crews from, uh, all over the place, uh, other states, Canada. And, uh, they, there were a lot of people without power. When I first looked, um, I, I think it was, uh, about 2 o'clock sat, in the morning, Saturday morning, um, Friday night, Saturday morning, uh, there were 30,000 and some odd people. I think that went up considerably, uh, through the day Saturday, uh, as it got heavier and wetter and more stuff came down. When I got up this morning, I had a really busy few days and I got up this morning and my conscience was bothering me that I hadn't heard from anybody or reached out to anybody to look into this matter. And so I got on the phone this morning and, and I started reaching out to everybody. We had 226 people at that time without power. I, I got together with the Emergency Management Director, we personally went out and we had two other people join us. I want to thank, uh, Jeff and Gary Graham for coming in and helping us today as we went around and made contact in all these areas, um, and, uh, made sure everybody was okay. We are currently, according to the website, at eight, uh, houses without power. So that's a pretty good day, getting things squared away, everybody's okay, um, that, that we saw, met with. And, uh, I, I, I'm going to sit down with the Emergency Management Director and, and, and I, I've had some conversations with Darren and Josh Dofflin from the Fire Departments, uh, Dave Fuller. And, um, I'm going to, uh, get with him and just kind of try to formulate a little better plan, because I, I think we should have been on this, um, sometime Sunday, and I apologize for that. Thankfully, everybody's okay, power's back on for almost everybody and, uh, we'll look into that and, and get moving forward. Comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda? Anybody? Lisa?
Um, I have two, and kind of to piggyback onto your remarks, Mike. I had the pleasure of meeting with one of the Highway workers, he introduced himself, I think his name was Chris. I'm terrible at names, so I hope we have somebody that works for you named Chris. Uh, very nice guy, so just wanted to give a shout out to Chris. And then, um, power adages, um, obviously is a big concern of mine and, and should be of everybody. So I had a similar situation happen a couple of years ago, it was a Halloween weekend, I was without power for three days, and without power for three days before that, um, never in this cold type of weather, so that's, you know, obviously adds to it. So I understand some people were out and about checking on other people, that's great. But, um, like you, I, I wish something was done a little bit sooner for a lot of people. I saw over 100,000 people in the state of Vermont lost power during the storm. The highest number I saw in Weathersfield, which probably is different than what other people saw, was like 674 residents in town. So that's quite a few, um...
Let me, I'm not sure that's residents or, or, um, locations, because that could be more residents.
Probably, yes, probably. Um, you're probably right. So, um, I just want to add as a point person for Martin Moywale House, Martin Moywale Hall trustees, this side of town, Route 5, did not lose electricity. Um, I live right down the road on Route 5 and this building had electricity. We did have it rented on Saturday, people came in and, and had birthday parties. So I think it's important to make it known that this is a public building. A lot of people could have came here, charged their electronic devices, cooked a hot meal, we had eight burners in the kitchen, two women's in the kitchen, microwave in the kitchen, um, used the bathroom, that actually flushed the toilets.
Did, did you come and open the building?
I did not, because I was not notified, and honestly, it was rented on Saturday, um, and like other people, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, in hindsight, and it's never been open to the public in a situation like that. The reason being is because there's not a generator here. So, uh, but when we don't lose electricity here, the building should be open to the public, so...
I agree.
I just wanted to throw that out there. At the next trustees meeting, we'll talk about this more, um, just to get the consensus. I did, I did look at the bylaws and the deed information, I don't see that it's, um, something that isn't allowed.
Good, good, because we talked about that today. And I also had a conversation with Darren about this today.
Yeah, so if, if anyone wants me to be part of, um, some communication when the, um, Emergency Management Director and other people meet, I'm happy to do that. Again, I'm one of three trustees, but I'm pretty sure the other two trustees are, are going to be on the same page. And the building should be opened when it can be opened for the public to use.
I, I will, I'm, I'm going to talk to Rick and I'll, I'll give him that information.
Okay.
Make sure I have a, a phone number and email address for you before you leave.
I'll email.
Okay. And I'll make sure, anything else?
Well, we're on that subject. Uh, November 14th, at a Select Board Meeting, uh, there was discussion about a generator for this building and I believe, uh, a contract was awarded, so is there an update on installation date for that?
That, that date wasn't set for until next spring anyway.
Yes, spring.
So, in spring, okay.
It's purchased.
I didn't know the, the timeframe on that, I, I looked at the minutes and I didn't see it.
Yeah. Nothing, uh, there yet? Anybody else?
Paul, did you have anything or no?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I do, I have one thing.
Yeah.
I'm very disappointed that, um, the Planning Board meeting was canceled due to improper warning. This board has taken that subject up in the past, thought it was straightened out. I think, Mr. Chairman, it's time that the board handle a different situation to make sure that meetings are handled correctly and, um, we're here to serve the public. And this isn't going on too long for me, something's not working, so I think we should develop a new plan.
In this, the Planning Commission meeting that was missed on Monday night, Ryan Gumbart, uh, took the responsibility for that. Um, and by that, I mean, he owned up to the fact that he dropped the ball. He posted, uh, the agenda, and we've had a meeting and, and had a discussion about agendas and he's going to start doing it differently. He, he's going to start posting them much, much earlier and then revising them up to within the 48-hour period, uh, as needed. And, uh, what, what happened was he, he just, he was very busy and he dropped the ball on, uh, when he posted that, which was actually on Saturday night. He knew he had till 6:30 Saturday night to meet the 48-hour deadline before Monday night's meeting and he forgot to upload that. So, you know, it's, I, I'm not sure that each circumstance has been any one person's fault, but I, I do understand, and Brandon and I, and, and the chairs of, I, I didn't, Paul wasn't there and, because it was, the meeting was particularly for another circumstance, but, uh, uh, we have met with those and started to, uh, try to work on a plan to get that stuff, you know, in a group and, and, and better organized.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
That meeting with the chairs has nothing to do with our ability to warn meetings, which is to post them in proper hours with the agendas at the two post offices, at this building and on the town's website. There's something wrong, it's been happening, it happened again, I don't care whose dog ate whose homework.
Well, I, I, I agree and I disagree. The, the disagreement is that as the Chair of this board, it's my responsibility to make sure that my, this agenda is posted. And that would be, uh, the same for, uh, any other chair, that it's their responsibility to follow up and make sure that it's happened.
But having said that, the chairs set the agenda, they don't work for the town, there's a, there's something going on with the persons that work that take care of that, that's my point. You set the agenda, you give that information to somebody else. It's not the chair's job to go to the post offices and to go onto the website to do that.
I, I didn't say it was their job, I said, I think it's also their responsibility to verify that it's...
I made my point, let's move on, we've got something to do. I, I'm going to keep after this and I'll, if you don't want to put it on the agenda, then we'll have a problem in March.
Well, maybe. Holiday schedule, um, just real quick, uh, just, this is from the minutes, uh, I just want to make sure that, to, to go through this real quick. Christmas and New Years both fall on a Sunday this year. Uh, as such, and according to policy, the town offices will be closed on Monday, 12/26, and Monday, 1/2, January 2nd and December 26th. Uh, the, the Mondays following the, the holidays. And our next Select Board Meeting will be on Tuesday, uh, January 3rd. It will not be on Monday because of the holiday. Any other comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda? Uh, review minutes from previous meeting, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes, 12:5, 20:22? I'm sorry?
I will.
Oh, did you?
I wanted to make comments.
I didn't see you, I can't, I can't see past Brandon's head.
My name's Vince Stuhl and I'm a new school, school board member here in Weathersfield. And, um, I was asked to be here today, uh, to talk about, um, CLA and, um, yes, some of the things that, uh, we had in, uh, in working on next year's budget. And Mike and Brandon were actually at our meeting last Tuesday to help, I think, the board understand a little bit more of what's going on and what we're concerned about with the budget and with, um, you know, activities with it. And I'm just going to read, uh, so this, so I'm new, new to the board, so bear with me, I'm going to read, uh, some of the stuff that we've been working.
Can I, can I say a point of order for this?
Yes.
There's an agenda on here.
That's what I...
Oh, there is?
Yes.
So, so let's, let's just, let's just do that at the agenda, if that's okay with the chair.
That, that's what I was chasing for and I'm, I'm like, I'm like, where did, where did it go? I'm just, I'm sure it's supposed to be on it, where is it, Paul?
Number 11.
Town reappraisal discussion, yeah, there, okay, thank you. I don't know why, but yes, I, I was, I was looking for that, I was going to stop you, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Yes, it's, says right here, comments from citizens, topics not on the agenda. Review minutes, previous meeting, uh, do I hear a motion for 12:5, 22?
I will.
Who's, who said that?
I did.
Kelly.
Second.
I'll second him.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion on the minutes from 12:5? Hearing none, all those in favor have signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, motion carries. Uh, fire truck loan schedule, uh, I think this is you, Brandon?
Steve Hyer.
Steve Hyer? Thank you.
The board has authorized to purchase a, a new fire truck and in doing so, they authorized borrowing up $270,000 for a period of up to seven years. So the decision was made to borrow the $270 for seven years. And I think you, in your packets, there should have been copies of, uh, what might be something that some of you have seen before, but it's the loan paperwork from the bank in order to, uh, accomplish that. So, um, the paperwork is from M&amp;T Bank, previously Peoples, uh, at 4.28% for a period of seven years. And if you approve of that, then you should pass a motion to do so. And then I've got the originals that need to get signed in three different places, but the clerk of the board gives the sign a couple of additional times, attesting that the signatures are truly from the other board members. There's one step beyond this, because Vermont law considers short-term borrowing up to five years. After five years, Vermont law treats borrowing more as if it were a bond. And bonding requires, um, steps and proof of those steps. So we're, I think Brandon, this is in the process of submitting that proof to the bank. The bank needs a legal opinion that the loan is, is appropriate. So there's one more step beyond this, the bank just has to get that legal opinion and then they plan to turn the money over to us on the 27th. So, this is necessary to get prepared for it, um, but we don't anticipate there'll be a problem, but there is that legal opinion that will happen between now and 27th.
So the motion needs to be for just the $270,000 to be financed for more than seven...
...years at 4.28% from M&amp;T Bank.
Does it need to contain the 320, not, the, the not to exceed 325,000? That, that's not necessary, is it?
270.
And there's nothing coming out of reserve for this?
Well, not, all you...
But it's not really...
The truck, the wording of the truck went on to say...
Yeah.
Not more than 325,000 dollars, with 50,000 coming from reserves, 270 from the, the loan and it didn't have an amount, but there's $5,000 left, which was, uh, a company sale of the old truck.
Yeah.
The only thing that matters right now is the loan part.
The 270. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, and sign the loan to M&amp;T Bank, uh, for the, the amount of $270,000 at an interest rate of 4.28% for a period of seven years.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Darren?
Yeah, um, I sent Brandon and Steve an email, the reason for this is the pump module should be here next week and the chassis as well, and part of the contract stated that we signed was one of that stuff here, we've got to get money to the manufacturer, so...
Okay.
That's why I thought we got to push on it.
So do you want us to vote for this or against it?
I do.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In that, in that motion, do we need, or Steve, I, maybe I could ask, do you, we, we just stated the, the time, the, the amount, the interest rate, all that, do we need to say that it was for capital, uh, capital equipment for a fire truck? Or does it matter? Doesn't matter?
You could, you could, I would add that.
All right, I, I'm okay if, 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 if we can, we'll add that for capital...
Second, okay.
Capital equipment for a fire truck.
Okay. DeForest, you get that?
Sorry, thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any extensions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Dry hydrant, new construction, yes.
Could I ask one question on the fire truck?
I don't know.
On the Ultra fire truck? I would like to start advertising that for sale with the, uh, in the bottom line saying that the truck won't be available until late spring, early summer, so we can start getting that truck out there instead of trying to hang on to it all summer and fall. Is that okay with the board?
Does the board need to authorize it?
Well, I'm going to find out before we go ahead and do it, before it's on season.
You're okay?
I think the board needs to authorize it.
Dave?
Where's the status of the truck you lent to the other town?
Oh, we've got that.
Okay.
Good, glad you remembered that, Dave. I'm tired. Uh, uh, any discussion on Darren's question, anybody have any concerns? Okay, let him go ahead and...
Trust whatever the fire chief wants to do.
So general consensus is okay? Okay? You need, you need a motion or you're good?
I think we're good.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Steve, you want that stuff signed?
There's, um, three pages here on the right-hand side for Select Board signatures. Whoever the clerk is may want to be the last one to sign, just so that you know, they're the real signatures of everybody else.
That means it's your truck. Just a quick question, does it...
Exactly! That's exactly, I was picking up what he was getting now.
Yeah. What, he wants the debt? Why not?
I could have used that truck earlier this year. I'm, I'm just holding up, before moving on, let these documents get signed, I, I don't think...
The top cover, Steve?
So that Steve doesn't have to stay here all night, if he's, he may want to be anyway, huh?
Is that?
This one too?
Yes, there are three...
Okay, that's, all right.
Three places.
I was going to say it looked like that on here, so... Can't be...
Does that mean I have to sign it twice?
You have to sign it, one, two, three, five times. That's right, you get to sign those, two of those pages.
Yeah.
Because this is a complicated process, I'm holding up the meeting.
And then you assume personal liability with the loan of the town, Paul.
Dave and I have already covered that, Steve, we're ahead of you.
Why not?
I think Sam Kelly is responsible for it.
Yes, that's right, that's what we said.
It's not much different than the school loans for my kids, so...
Your fire queue reviews the loans of the town.
Thank you, sir.
You didn't sign it first, you thought we weren't going to sign, Steve, the threads were blank.
I know.
Is, is that all you needed? That's three documents?
That is perfect, thank you all.
You are welcome, thank you, Steve. Um, next on the agenda is a dry hydrant, new construction, Lyons Drive, I think that's you, Josh?
Yeah.
So, I have a request, West Weathersfield Fire Department's requesting to install a dry hydrant on Lyons Drive. Two estimates were received, which includes an estimate from Mountain Meadows for $5,500 and an estimate from Black and Tan Construction LLC for $6,000. The department is requesting to move forward with the Mountain Meadows estimate for $5,500. The dollars, the reserve account currently has a balance of $12,966. If the request is funded from the reserves, the balance will be reduced to $7,466. Alternatively, we can fund this from ARPA. Um, I want to, I'd like, before entering into that discussion, I'd like to start with a motion to, well, should we? Where do you want to, where, where do you want to go with the money from this, from reserves or from ARPA? Board discussion? Dave?
I don't know what the balance of ARPA is, so it's hard to keep picking these single entities and, um, I'm not sure. I suppose we could talk about funding it through the reserve account and then re, we, refunding a list of accounts to ARPA rather than...
After the fact.
Rather than go one, you know, because then we're going to have, the next meeting's going to say, what about me? Okay, here we go, come on, so...
And I agree, well, I was going to say I would go through, um, reserves and if you, if you want to have discussion as far as ARPA.
Oh, just quickly, I, I have no problem with dry hydrants, so don't take this the wrong way, but do we have a list of what we wanted for dry hydrants? Are we picking them off as we go? Like, is there five that we wanted, five more in, in the town that we wanted and is this the top one on the list? Um, and secondly, um, it looks like this is on, you know, someone's property. Do we have the proper easements and do we have all that stuff signed and how that works? Uh, I want to make sure that's...
Well, this is, this is on, this is on Josh, Josh, did you, did you hear all those questions?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you're up.
Yeah, the, we've met, we have met, both departments have met, we've have come up with lists of hydrants.
Okay.
Um, we have not done, uh, for three, three or four years now, we have not applied for any, uh, hydrants through the task force, um, for the, for the, through the state. So we are, we started that process, um, myself, Darren and, uh, the town manager this summer in hopes to get in two of those this year. But we weren't able to do that, so we are, the plan is to take and apply for two more for the spring of next year. But for, for this project here, I'm looking just to take and, uh, fund it through our reserve accounts. Uh, as far as the easements and so forth, obviously, um, that can, that, we have met with the owner. Uh, he's in agreeance with that and, um, an easement and so forth can be obtained after the approval of this.
Okay. It sounds like we want to do this from the reserves, so, uh, before any further discussion, we've got to have a motion on the floor for the, um, installation of a dry hydrant on Lyons Drive. The, I was looking for the, I guess it does, it was $5,500, uh, with, to come out of the reserve account.
And, and the proper easements will be retained?
I'm sorry, the what?
And the proper easements from the...
Yeah, yeah, and, okay.
I think that should be on there that...
You making the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, so the motion's been made, second?
I'll, I'll second it, but can we add that it's going to get awarded to Mountain Meadows Property Maintenance?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Mount, Mountain Meadows, Mountain Meadow Property Maintenance.
I'm sorry, DeForest, I, I made a mess of that, did you get it all?
I got a garbled bunch of words, I'm not sure.
So, uh, the department is requesting, uh, $5,500... So, uh, the department is requesting, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars, um, for the install of a dry hydrant on Lyons Drive. Uh, the, out of the reserve account and awarding this to Mountain Meadows.
Property Maintenance.
Property Maintenance and, uh, to secure the, um, the deed easements. Yeah, something like that. Paul's seconded. Further discussion? Go. Dave?
Is there, um, can this be done now, Josh? I mean, it's like winter time and I don't, I don't know if it's harder or easier or what does the contractor say that time and weather doesn't matter or what?
Yeah, this, uh, I had been working with getting these quotes for the, well, prior to this big storm. Um, obviously, beginning of December, it was still doable, so, um, I'll have to check with the contractor if not, if that's scheduled for the spring.
I would say that, and this is just a common sense, know-nothing opinion, uh, but Saturday when I was plowing, I didn't have much problem scraping up the sod. Uh, and we've had one day of cold weather, so I don't think the frost is too deep yet, so.
Correct.
Ray has a.
I just have an opinion. Uh, this time of year, if you're digging and you don't get the compaction right, it freezes, it's gonna be a mud hole in the spring.
Ah.
Especially near a pond.
Okay.
Um, it's not a matter of being frosty around it, it's not a matter of a cold snap coming through for the winter and then pouring in the spring.
Told you, I know nothing. Okay.
I have a second. Um, we should include some money for the easement, that does cost money. If you don't have it in there, you don't know where money's coming from unless you have it.
Do you know what the easement's gonna cost, Josh?
What was that? I didn't really, I couldn't really hear Ray.
Ray is suggesting that there might be a cost for the easement and that we need to include that?
Well, I assumed it would be no different than the process that we go through with the state of a two-page easement that they sign. And, uh, Brandon, can you jump in on that or no?
Yeah, I have it written down already to talk to town council tomorrow about that. So I would say a couple of hours from town council if necessary.
And, and these, obviously, these easements, um, that we do through the state is, we are getting funding. Seventy-five percent of the funding is coming through the state and then we're matching the twenty-five percent, basically stating that the town is liable, uh, for the maintenance and repairs and upkeep of said hydrant.
Um, well, I'm gonna ask the board. Do you wanna continue with this tonight or you wanna hang on until we have the numbers? Dave?
Well, it's motion on the floor.
Yes.
That's number one point. But number two, I, I like what Ray said and I would, I'm okay with passing this tonight, but I would completely defer to the construction, to let Ray deal with it at highway, because we're supposed to get another inch of rain on Friday and fifty degrees. That's gonna make mud. I, I want this to work. I don't want it to be corrected. So I think it's smart to get with the contractor and the highway and the fire chief and let them handle that, but I think it should be done in this.
Well, I, I can table the motion for now and we can take it up at a, at a, at a future meeting and finish this off once we have the numbers. And, yeah, because it didn't seem to me like, I, I'm agreeing with you and Ray, it didn't seem like it was all that urgent that we get it done this week or next week.
These are only a couple hours. You can ask me and watch that's gonna be two hundred bucks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that we can come back and ask for a reserve request.
It's not the easement that bothers me, it's the timing of this and here it is, Christmas and whatever, that's all.
So, so what do you wanna do? Do you wanna modify the number, uh, and go ahead with it or do you wanna just hold off, table it and hold off?
No, I'm nervous about the construction. I heard what Ray said and I'm agreeing with him. And I don't know the site, so I don't know the, I don't know the makeup of the stone or the mud or whatever, so, I don't know.
Wendy?
So then why can't we continue with the vote and then we will let the people that are involved with the, whether it's Ray or whoever, to do, you know, to handle that, like, but at least the money for the hydrant will be there, the money for the council. We can say up to two hundred dollars and then leave it up to the highway.
Okay, then that would be modifying the motion to fifty-seven hundred?
Yes, sir.
Motion is, and second?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so we're, so we're modifying the motion to fifty-seven hundred to allow two hundred dollars for council?
Yep.
Okay, with that, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda is fire department turnout gear. Uh, is, let me see, is this Josh or is this Darren or both?
Both.
Actually, I think. Who wants to go first? Okay, Darren, Josh, Darren's gonna go first.
That's okay with you.
Hold up. I don't know, Josh?
Yep, that's fine.
Let me ask you this. Josh, how you feeling? I know you're sick.
Not too bad.
Let, let him go first.
Go ahead, Josh.
You, you have the, uh, I'm bouncing between the, the report and Zoom here, turning it off and on. Um, so the, what Brandon had typed up, you guys have, uh, in front of you for, um, the request for turnout gear out of the reserve accounts. So I'll just read off from ours. Um, the department is requesting to purchase one coat, one pair, one pair of pants for a total of three thousand eighty-five dollars. In addition, um, the department is requesting additional transfer of fourteen hundred and seventy dollars to be applied to purchase of a set of turnout gear that was purchased in the department budget, which exceeded the available amount in their account for PPE due to inflation. The fourteen hundred and seventy will eliminate the budget overall. So requests, total requests that we're, we're looking for is four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars from the reserve.
Okay, um, so let's go ahead and, you wanna do, let's do these, let's do both departments before we do a motion. And then we got a few things to maybe break up here. Um, Darren, go.
So, uh, when I sent this out to you guys, um, we'd already bought one set out of our budget. I've got four new firefighters and I'm gonna take some of my older gear and give it to them. They're all certified. So I need, when I sent this out, I needed two sets. Since then, we were in a fire in Paramount and, uh, we ruined a pair of gear. So since then, I'm looking to get three sets and Josh and I and Brandon, we all had a conversation last week on this. So the amount we originally put in for was fifty-five thirty. So the sets, uh, the sets are twenty-seven sixty-five a piece, so that brings my total up to eighty-two ninety-five on that, three sets of gear. And the other thing I was looking for was three helmets and that was thirteen, thirteen hundred and eighty-ohths.
For all three?
Yeah, thirteen, yeah, thirteen, thirteen for a total of three.
So what do you have for a grand total, Darren?
Eighty-two ninety-five plus.
Ninety-six seventy-five.
There you go, thank you.
So what do you have for a total for Darren? Oh, I, no, I have a total for both departments. Uh, Josh at forty-five fifty-five and Darren's, uh, for a to, grand total of fourteen two thirty. Anybody match that? That would be for both departments as opposed to the ten eighty-five? Everybody keep up with that?
What'd you say?
I said fourteen two thirty, yes.
Yep.
That's what you got too?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be the total for both departments. The, the only question I have and, and I don't really have a question, yeah, I do have a question. The fourteen seventy to be applied to the, uh, purchase of the turnout gear that was already purchased by the West Weathersfield Fire Department. Uh, that was a, that was, uh, gear that was bought out of the budget and it exceeded the budget. So that request, uh, discussing it with Brandon, uh, comes back to what Dave had talked about earlier and that's taking it out of ARPA. But do we wanna do that now or do it all in a lump sum at a later date? It, you know, it's kind of factored into this one right now. So what, what say?
I, I don't wanna lose it and forget it.
Yeah, I don't either.
We're not gonna lose the money. I don't wanna lose the fact that we need that money. I, I do agree with Dave. Sometimes it's hard because we, we don't know where we're at, so, but I don't really think.
Dave's point earlier was to try to do it all in, in one lump sum and, and I, I agree with that, but I'm also agreeing with you too. I don't wanna lose this.
Mike?
Yes?
So if we, the last page is the ARPA balances and this.
Brandon, is it, is it an issue for you guys in the town office to do this, you know, piecemeal like this, fourteen seventy here?
Steve, what do you prefer? Really?
Look at him smile all there.
Would you prefer to do the ARPA requests and approvals in piecemeal or in one lump sum? Like we, you and I sit down and put them all together and they vote on them as a lump sum?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I, I.
There's the answer.
Conceptually, it makes more sense to have a plan for spending ARPA money rather than to just piecemeal, dr- drib it and drop it out over time and all of a sudden you spend eight hundred thousand dollars that you didn't even know you spent.
I think that's what Dave's point is, keep an eye on what you're doing.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion that we approve the purchase of the fire department requested turnout gears, but a total not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. To be, to be taken out of the reserve account at this time. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? My question is, I think that includes that fourteen seventy.
It does.
It does, okay. Josh?
Yeah, I mean, if that's an issue, I'm fine with taking that out and then knowing that, obviously, for that line item, it's gonna be over at the end of the year.
Well, well, we just made the motion and it includes it.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I, 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 I think it looks like we're gonna probably start using that plan moving forward. Uh, but for now, that, that's in there. Um, any further discussion from the board or anybody else on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Uh, the motion is for a total of fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars to buy, um, three coats, three pairs of pants, three helmets for a Scottney and one coat, one pair of pants for West Weathersfield and that includes a fourteen hundred and seventy-dollar transfer of ARPA funds. Will we have to do that separately to move that money out of ARPA or is it okay right in this motion?
I think it's fine in the motion.
We charge some of this to ARPA?
Well, fourteen hundred and seventy dollars, moving it from ARPA.
No, no.
The motion's.
Oh, not yet, not yet, it hasn't, no.
That's correct. Just from reserves. Just from reserves right now.
None of that's.
Ah, none of this is ARPA?
Yeah, all of it's coming out of reserves.
I, I apologize. I got ahead of myself.
And the fourteen seventy has been charged to the general fund, but like Josh was saying, it put his line over. So then we'll pull that from the general fund into reserves.
At, at a later date as we move forward with our plan. Thank you all for correcting me on that. So, so we're good. So that is the motion. Um, and is there, is there a particular, this goes to any particular company? Cause there was two quotes here. Is this Bergeron or MES?
It's MES.
This is, okay, and is that true, Josh? Yours is MES also?
Fire tech and safety for ours.
Two different companies?
Two different, yeah, two different vendors.
Do we have to break that up, Dave? No? Okay.
No, they noted on the bid. They, they did the work. They, they solicited the, uh, prices.
Okay. So West Weathersfield is fire tech and safety and, um, a Scottney is MES. That'll, if that's in there, that'll at least point whoever's dealing with it in the right direction. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You are welcome. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. And Josh, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
For everything you guys do.
Uh, Habitat for Humanity presentation.
I, I, I didn't know.
I'm sorry?
Lost you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Josh. Habitat for Humanity, you're up.
Hey, guys.
Please introduce yourselves so that our recording secretary, well, she's probably already got your name, but so everybody knows.
I'm Eva Loos, with Valley Health for Humanity. Can you spell it, please?
Sure.
E V I.
Yep.
L O O M I S.
LOL?
L O O.
She said LOL. I like keeping the moods off in these meetings.
Just some of us.
My name's Andrew Grimson, G R I F S O N, and I'm a member of the board of directors.
Should I plug into?
We have a presentation, Richard, if you had it, but we need to plug in.
Oh, yeah, I guess we don't need, if you.
Yeah, everyone has it printed out. We have extra copies over here in case anybody.
While you're kind of talking, Brandon, I'm the executive director of Urban Health. And Andrew has a longer history with organizations all around him.
I was on, I've been on, I've been involved in half that since 2013. I was on board of directors for about five years. I had Eva's job as an interim executive director for about two years. Stepped down as I turned out and then I just rejoined recently primarily because of the project we're gonna talk about tonight. It's a large project and I was developed and made a patent law.
So, hey, we were founded in nineteen eighty-six. We are based in Western Kentucky, Vermont, and we serve Valley towns of Vermont. And, um, currently, we're building a high-performance home in Lebanon for a family of five, they're paying for mortgages. And we are able to partner with, um, partner families, individuals and families who meet our eligibility guidelines, which includes, um, income between fifty and eighty percent of Houdini and family's county income and then other qualifying, um, requirements or that, there are many, but, um, women has to live in the river valley for at least a year. They, um, need to be unable to access a conventional mortgage. Um, they need to contribute three hundred sweat equity hours and also, um, a down payment and closing costs. And, um, they also, most importantly, need to demonstrate need for a habitat home. So our homeowners, all of the mortgages that we hold, um, the families purchase those through an affordable zero percent interest mortgage. And we built about thirty-six homes and conducted numerous repairs, including after tropical storm Irene. And we have about two hundred and fifty active volunteers who contribute two thousand hours, oh, sorry, three thousand hours annually. And, um, before building this home in Lebanon, our last new construction home was also to high-performance standards and sharing Vermont. So even though we're building in Manhattan currently, we love to build to efficiency Vermont standards. So I'm not sure if you all are familiar with the site that we're talking about, but, um, we are really excited about this property. It's two point eight acres, it's flat, has good building conditions, good soils. What we purchased are, um, a really small cottage, what used to be an old restaurant and also a very small duplex. And all of these properties share with the Grange building, which is, um, just converted into a theater, a, um, five thousand gallon per day septic system, which, um, rated for thirty bedrooms. And two of the buildings that we purchased are connected, from what we can tell, to the municipal water supply. So the cottage is not from what we can tell. And then in, in the rear of the site, there's, um, a septic, a large septic field, so we cannot build on that area. We won't build in the back portion, so we shared green space, um, for the residents to use. And as you know, this is under five in the village district, um, there's schools, you know, predominantly residential area for the most part. And it's a short drive to Paramount, um, it's an eight, there's public transportation, um, central to all sorts of growing opportunity.
So I'll talk to, if you look at slide four, that's got the, the current layout, um, from what, you know, what surveys we have. And please ask questions as we go through this. The three buildings that are on there right now, what we're planning to do is the duplex that exists right next to the Grange. We want to renovate that. It's in pretty good shape. we want to renovate that. It's in pretty good shape. It's a little tighter, but it's got decent foundation, structure's good. That's where we want to renovate. We'll, we'll do a deep energy retrofit on this building to bring it up to, as much as we can be efficient Vermont standards. The little cottage, we are either going to move it to the rear of the property or take it down. It's too close to the road. It's actually, you know, over steps, they, um, set back, we'll step back. So, we, we want to move it back, just be a deep, not a good location. Or it's a nice little spot, it'd be great for just like one couple to live in. And it's actually pretty solid, the foundations, not so great, but they, structure is also pretty good shape. The restaurant, as I would phrase it, is basically boulders already. Its structure is not good. The foundation, from what we can see, is good. Um, but we're being careful going in there because we're starting to see some signs of the floor caving in. But our plan of that is to salvage the foundation. We may have to do some buttering or some extra work on it. We would then build up off that foundation, um, you know, get into the details of that in a second.
Can I just, I just wanna ask a quick question.
Sure.
Total, total amount of, of homes on this piece of property will be what?
We are looking at, that's the next one, um, we are looking at up to eight units total, um, of the front of property. And that's gonna be a combination of, uh, a triplex, which will be set down the foundation. The, the original duplex will either be a single plan or a duplex, we're not sure yet. We're gonna work on the designs, and there'll be two new structures, one will be duplex and the other will be a single panel. That gives us up to eight units total, makes it one through maybe four bedrooms.
Be four separate buildings?
Have they met with zoning yet?
How, how?
No, this is still, we're still in the pre-development stage and we have not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe at the current time that that complies with zoning regulations in the town.
We, when I read it, we thought it did.
Under what, under what section?
Let, let, let's not derail that. I, that's a, that's a separate, I, sorry, Mike, I, you're, you're the chair. I don't mean to, I don't mean to jump that way.
You're the chair of the planning commission, we work together there too.
No, 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 I understand that. I, I just, I, I don't wanna derail their presentation, so that, that, thank you. So there'll be, there'll be like six to eight, but four buildings and they're all, will they all be owned by you guys? Or now each individual family can own a home and everything?
Right, so this will be under a condominium association? So each, each, they all own their, their buildings and be, then make sure that you're in property management too?
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be like a condominium.
Sounds like a P U D.
Yeah, so, no, so thank you. I, I didn't wanna derail, yes, thank you.
No, that's quite right. No, we are, we're still very early in the process, so.
Yep.
You know, at least now we sort of, you know, at first we didn't know what we didn't know. Now we're getting better at knowing what we do know.
Yeah, and I, and I will be, also be glad to, be glad to hear anything at the planning commission. So, work with Ryan and, and we'll get you on the agenda too, and, and we can go through and, and help with that.
We wanted to get here first.
Yep, absolutely.
We're, we wanna get introduced to you all initially and talk about what we're doing. And also, you know, we need to get funding to do the pre-development, um, you know, which is not cheap, unfortunately.
Before we purchased the property though, we spoke with, we're speaking with Ryan in the land use department, just to make sure that this was, what we wanted to do here was possible. So he mentioned the process and.
Yeah, I, I, I apologize, I don't wanna derail that with, I just wanna, I just, so please keep going.
We know we're gonna have many purposes to go through this. But, you know, we're, we're also wanna present that, you know, the idea.
Absolutely.
The concept of this is, we call it a village setting, but it's, you know, cluster development. The advantage of this is, to do single-family homes are understandable, this is a land that is just perpetually expensive now. Our, the only cost to us in Lebanon is gonna be total, a hundred and eight thousand. And so, you know, we can't do that anymore. We used to be able to build with land and everything for hundreds of foot, but those days are long gone. So we're looking at doing more cluster development.
Yep.
And, you know, the big advantages of this property is we've got a septic system there that's, you know, highly created, it's friendly. It's exceptionally buildable. We like also the location, uh, being close to the village, you know, easy access to the public transit, easy access to Paramount. So a lot of it then is good. We don't want to do too much further. There's a couple of things that we're looking on. We do wanna make this video of the character of the neighborhood, uh, that, you know, it is, we've sort of toured it around, looked around. It's more or less residential right through there, homes on large lots. So what we will do is when we design this out, you can see that on slide six, along with piling, we're gonna do vegetation, buffer, pots, possibly some berms in there. We gotta make sure we get drainage, don't mess our drainage block there. But we wanna make sort of a sound and a visual there so that you don't, you know, for the residents in there as well as people driving by, you know, doesn't look like a culvert, big town homes. Taller buildings will be, you know, if you're doing the two-story buildings, they're gonna be towards, we're gonna keep a little profile in the front. Again, as you're probably, Mike, you're talking about, not, not even notice that it's residential neighborhood in there. With the green space, the common green space, that's what an acre of land, septic field is part of that, but we're looking at a community garden. We're looking at a play area, uh, for, you know, families, kids. It's in the back, you know, probably be all fenced in, so it's a nice safe area for all the residents of this. And, and then as well, but, you know, we're, uh, the last thing we're gonna do is a possibility for a community solar in there. Solar, I don't wanna do sort of mass, um, over there, it's a possibility if we can, if we can make that happen. Are we broken at this point or this? On slide seven, a few of our breakdown of what we're looking at in terms of square footage and number of bedrooms. If we build everything up that we're thinking of doing, if we deal with about twenty bedrooms, and, you know, use one and a half people per bed, that's the, we, that's the, that's the, that's the town that will be in there. It's about eighty-four hundred square feet built.
Oh, cool.
So it's a kind of small project, you know, even at two hundred square foot, we're talking one point six million plus site development. So it's probably a two million dollar property for us. So this is, you know, very big commitment on part. But we see that, you know, we see a lot of potential here. We see this as a great location. And we can see the, you know, the big advantages of somebody that's a kind of cluster development. Looking at this.
Yeah. So, we, we've heard that housing stock in, um, Weathersfield has increased in twenty years, so it's, you know, a big addition, relatively speaking. You know, if you need to grow the town population, um, revitalize a, a lighted property, this is not a tractable property. And we hope to change that. It would also enhance the residential character of the neighborhood. And, um, we're really excited about the opportunity to develop, um, an innovative cottage, uh, court-style cluster community. And it would have a really sort of village-y feel to it, to the town. It would increase property tax revenues, add students to the school system, um, empower community involvement through volunteer opportunities. Habitat Homes and Habitat in general don't have enough support of massive amounts of community support, um, so we welcome volunteers. If you're interested, just let us know. Attract and retain long-term residents. And, um, when we, you know, we, we use volunteer labor to keep the costs of our, our homes, um, more affordable for our partner families. But when we do hire out, we hire local subcontractors, we purchase our materials locally. And, um, this is also an opportunity for the town to, um, help meet its zoning objectives or your bylaws. Villages are typically higher density, um, vibrant areas, and that's what it's to be.
So the last part of this, we'll talk about is our budget, what we see so far, and this is still a period of building in the process. But for our pre-development, we anticipate about fifty thousand dollars spent on our park. We are here to, you know, I don't know if this, basically to ask for part of your ARPA funds. We are asking for twenty thousand. We are also talking to the H C B for another twenty thousand. And the remaining ten thousand, uh, we are hoping, we were hoping to do something with EPA for ground building development. That may or may not happen, so we actually could have had a, a copy here, but we may show up in your office and we, um, this is, you know, the first step in a fairly long process. We, if all goes well, we'd like to get our site development done in twenty twenty-three, and we'd like to actually tackle renovating the duplex within that year as well. Yeah, we've talked with Darren and he's very eager to, uh, use the restaurant as a burn.
Training, training room.
Training room, so, uh, we're looking at that. We, we have some concerns just about what's in that building. We just don't know what, you know, the age of these buildings, we don't quite know what's all in there. You know, we just, we knew, we know we're gonna have some surprises on this. But our timing is, you know, we wanna get building and get people moved in as early as we can. We do wanna get all the site work done initially so that we're not, you know, pushing dirt around those who's living there. And we'd like to see, you know, by, probably twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, that all, all units are done. A lot of that is on funding, but that is our initial goal. So with that, I give that to somebody.
Paul, just another quick question. So you did mention like thirty residents. That's, that's mainly because of the bedroom size. But what you're looking at is families in each of these. They're not like a bedroom that's like just, like three different people living. So, so it's like my house, like if I have four bedrooms, but there's just my wife and I, that's not really, that's only two people, but it's a four-bedroom home. So, so you're, it might not be thirty residents total. It's, it's a family and they, they could have an office in one of the bedrooms or something of that nature.
We really do try and match the size of the home to the size of the family. So we wouldn't typically, um, allow a family moving in to be in a home that's bigger than their.
Okay.
So like, we probably wouldn't, our family committee probably, in our board, probably wouldn't approve a family to have like an extra bedroom as a, as a guest room or office. We also don't really dictate to our families what size home would work for them. You know, there's some families who are quite comfortable, like children sharing bedrooms, and that's, that's fine for them. So we kind of, we work with our families on the size of the home that.
And again, like I said, the families are purchasing these homes just at a, at a, at a decent price.
It's based on, it's based on, you know, we, we, it's a zero percent mortgage over thirty years, based on, you know, we try and recapture all our direct costs.
Right.
And based on affordability, so we look at, you know, they, they do not exceed thirty percent.
And what's the, what's the average income of the families that are, by getting your homes then?
It really depends. Um, we're actually allowed to work with families who have between thirty and eighty percent AMI. But because the river valley is such an expensive area to live in and being a certain climate supply, we really have to kind of lean towards the higher end of that. So typically between eighty percent, so like for a family of four, um, it might be like fifty-eight-ish thousand per year, sixty-eight maybe, that's.
Depends which county we're in.
No.
It might actually be more like sixty-eight, seventy-ish, yeah. I mean, these are families who, um, that's everyday working families.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. Oh, that's good.
I think a good way to describe it is this, it's always this workforce.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Hey, um, what's the long-term involvement with Habitat Community? Is this a long-term oversight?
So.
Once you even sold your dog here. We don't skip town.
Yeah, so when we, um, when we finish each unit is when we sell it and then we pay off a portion of our mortgage, um, that, that we're holding on the property. And so ultimately, all of the units will be in a condo association. Homeowners will need to be invested in that condo association. And then we, you know, we are, we support our families from, um, the time they apply, to the time they run their mortgage. And, but at this property, we won't have an ownership. So, if they need us, and, yeah.
Any other questions?
We're happy to stick around if, if we want to, if you wanna talk this out for the meeting.
So if it's a condo association, you said you don't really have anything to do with it once the home sells. So, who is the condo association? The residents?
The residents, they own, they own each, each of the moments they're, they're given.
It'd be like an HOA.
Association fees, they would pay it to each other?
They pay it to, they pay, they pay to, they, you know, they will have their own condominium board of homeowners association. They will pay into that. It'll be essentially like it's a corporation. And then that looks after all the common things like snowblowing, they, you know, launch their capital improvements, things like that, so.
Attorney's fees for the corporation.
It's an HOA.
HOA.
So they live there for, you said the upper valley, one of the requirements was you're there for a year. So when you.
In order for, for folks to apply with us, they have to have the upper valley for at least a year before applying.
So how does resale go? So if you sell to a family for one of the units and they decide in three months they're gonna move south, cause we love this weather.
We, we haven't worked out, um, the financing for this project entirely, so all of our previous mortgages, we, we hold unlevered mortgage, uh, levered services mortgages, and they're all zero percent interest. It's very possible, very likely that with these, um, they'll have perpetual affordability covenants on them because of the funding that will come in. So they will be resale restricted, so if we, if homeowners' mortgages are written this way, they'll be required to only be able to sell to folks who have income, um, ranging between a certain amount. And they'll be able to recapture a certain increase in their home value. But that's still to be determined. Do you wanna talk more about the, um?
Yeah, soft second.
Yeah.
One of the things we traditionally, cause people always concern that we, we all own the debts, but then market outs are a bit of a problem. They can't flip the house. We have what we call a soft second, where they will get a certain amount of increase on, on the value of the property. But, you know, basically, it depends on how we finance it. If we do certain grants, it's a perpetual affordability clause, so that if it's, if they sell, it sells to somebody else who's in a similar situation. So we always keep in this as affordable housing. And, you know, we do have families who move, we do have families who sell. They make enough off of it that they, you know, they recapture what they put into it plus inflation essentially. And then they can then use that to move on to something else they need to stay. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
The, the, well, the, the only thing I see, and I, I have to drift back here, Paul. Because, and, and, and DeForest, you've been around quite a long time and know our bylaws, zoning bylaws pretty well. DeForest used to be our zoning administrator. I'm, I'm not sure how I see a duplex splitting and selling in our current bylaws. Do you, do you see that? I mean, I guess what I see is most of our, like a duplex or triplex that we might have now would be a rental property that are apartments. And, and it's a piece of property that's owned by a landlord and they're on the tax bill. And I'm not familiar with anything in this town. Uh, now, I, I'm familiar with what you're talking about, I'm just not familiar. I guess what I'm getting at is, we may, we may have a lot of work to do. DeForest, do you, anything you?
You have a vice administrator? It's not my, my place.
What, my, my recommendation is just focus on what they've asked for tonight.
Yeah.
I totally believe that, um, between Ryan and, and, and on a planning commission, we can, we can have further discussions. You know, it is one of the things that we've talked about, is having affordable housing, is one of the things we've talked about is, is doing this kind of stuff. Um, and seeing how that fits in in the structure of what we have, so, um, I, I just don't feel that this is the place for those kind of, of discussions right now.
I do wanna bring up one thing, just pertaining to the, the property as far as for water. I, I'm not sure if you're familiar with, uh, the water system here in town. But this place, I guess at one time, you know, was a restaurant, had, uh, but right now, we are working to try to get more storage capacity for water. But we're, we're pretty much at our max until we can make some changes. The system itself is, is a, is a very small system. So for a project of this size, e- even when we did the school, we had to do certain things with the school when they, when they combined. And we had to update some things.
So.
This, so I just wanted to say that it is something that I do think that at some point maybe to come to one of the prudential committee meetings because.
Dave, had you stand up earlier?
Do you, have you closed on this property?
Yes, sir, I have.
So I, I have a suggestion. That you, that you, I saw, you know, six to eight units. And what my knowledge is saying, the maximum size in Weathersfield zoning right now is like one house for one acre. That's the minimum lots, that's the, that's it. So it's not allowed, although you're gonna have to go through the planning board, to go through, um, multi. Mike's right when he said P U D. There is a clause in the zoning that says planned unit development. However, you need to stay focused on your two point eight acres, which will only allow two, in the, in the most technical sense of it, two houses on those two point eight acres. It doesn't give you three. And I don't know the height restriction or whatever, so I would suggest that you might, look, your goals are ambitious here. I don't know how it will fit into the current zoning bylaws to make that happen. So I certainly would keep an eye to my next-door neighbors. So in other words, if there's a three or four acre parcel that's vacant, you might investigate amending your current. you might investigate amending your current purchase, which would be viewed as a friendly amendment to yours that would allow you to put those additional houses in that site and then leave room for common space. But that's just my advice. I, you're going to have to go through the planning board to work all that out.
Yeah, I would.
And we did, I mean, and, you know, we looked at this with our attorney looked at this and we did look under planned unit development, hundred percent.
Current, current PUD only allows a hundred and twenty-five percent increase though.
Again, again.
I, I, I get that, but, but they do need some of this information, Paul, a bit of guidance, you know? I get it. We can't solve any of that here, but they.
Well, then, I mean, if we're going to talk about it, then we should talk about it. You want to pull the rules up and we can go through them because that's.
No, no, I don't want to get into that.
Then, then, then what we're doing is literally we're talking about stuff that Dave, Dave has read a chapter and knows something. You and I are, we live this, you know, so on and so forth. So I, I don't want to make it. They're asking for some money, so I guess we need to make the decision on whether we're going to do that or not. The other quick thing I will say is, if you didn't already know this, the water system that's here in Ascutney on this side is not a town water system. It's an individually owned, um, um, it's a fire district. It's all the residents that are on this water system have taken out a bond and they own this water system. And there, there's a thing called LRUs that's used. It's, it's how much water can be used for, let's say if you were putting in, in another restaurant, obviously that would be more than, than a residential family home and so on and so forth. And to what Wendy was saying was, um, the, the pipelines that go down through the, the town roads and stuff are, are meant for a single residential, smaller stuff. So there, there could be possibility of needing an upgrade for that. It's not, it's not a, you know, it's not like, oh, just you hook up the water thing, which I didn't think you would think that, but that's a whole separate entity that's not even the town. So that's a, like she mentioned, the prudential committee meeting to go see where that would play, play into. So just, just. Yeah, so.
So now let's talk about Paul's favorite issue, which is the money. You've got something, Dave?
No, it is about the money. So.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, my suggestion is this. I don't want, I can't say yes, but I don't want to say no. So I suggest that you go to the planning board to see what at least potentially that we're talking about, whether this proceeds into the scale that you're looking for. Because the twenty thousand dollars in ARPA funds will hinge on that, I think.
I think it hinges on that and a couple of other things that I've heard too, that, that aren't necessarily in place right now and kind of need to be before I could do that.
And personally, I'm in agreement on the same thing as far as, I don't want to say no to the money, but I, I can't say yes because I don't know what other things were going to come up and, and so on, so.
And I, and I want to say that's where, where I stand on it also is that I think that a few things need to be done as far as, so that there's a better understanding per se pertaining to the water, whatever you need to do with planning, so that we can see if it would be doable. I said the same thing. It's not to say no, it's to say that I think there needs to be some further discussions with some of the other committees.
My question I have with the select board is, do you see a need for what are we called, for a whole process?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I, I have no, if I may, none of, none of the things, the comments that I've made tonight or anything, it's, it's, it's a negative towards any of that. It's, I just want to make sure things are done within the guidelines and, and right. And I'm very excited to see property cleaned up. I'm very, I mean, I've lived, personally, I've lived here all my life and I live right next to there within walking distance. And my mom used to work at the old top hat that was there cleaning and my friends lived there and like, I've grown up around it. So I totally understand it and I, what you've got is very appetizing from a, a standpoint of, of visual and, and, and community and so on. It's just, we need, let's see where we, let's see where everything goes.
That's good. No, I think, you know, we were looking for a planning commission later on. It sounds like we need to do that sooner than later.
Yeah, we can help with, we can help with rules and guidelines and work through some of that. Also, maybe if, if something is not fitting, it would be a ZBA thing too, which is another group here to, if you needed something that we couldn't give you, we can only work through what the actual bylaws say at that point in time. And that's it. The ZBA could give difference. And some might be conditional use, so you might have to be there anyways for a conditional use with the PUDs and stuff. Yep.
We want their involvement in how we design this, to be sure that it's a.
Nope.
I, I want to echo Paul's statement of, of not sounding negative. I know most everything I said sounded negative, but it's because I know the rules.
We, we want to work with.
I was kind of looking at that and said, whoa, wait a minute. I'm not sure where that fits.
Yeah.
But, but we can, we can get to that. Ray.
I just have a quick comment. Um, the ARPA funding, the resource we have, not us, but the state and the beds have really done a lot in terms of funding. I don't know if you've looked into a lot of that or not, but you're focusing on low income housing and this kind of stuff. So that might be a really.
Brendan. You've got time to meet with them at some point in time to look into any other grants or anything like that? Oh, I didn't want to throw you under the bus.
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, my wife's calling me, which is weird.
Um, you can meet with Brandon and he can help you look for some of those possible sources of funding and stuff. I just verified that with him while you were talking. So he's, he has time for that.
Thank you for presenting.
Anything else from anybody? Brendan, please, okay. All right. Thank, thank you all. Okay. All right, where to go? Twenty twenty-four budget discussion. Brendan, you want to take us into this?
Of course.
Everything okay?
I don't know. I tell you, notice that I'm in a meeting tonight and she called me, so I don't.
Do you need a minute? Do you need a minute?
Yeah, I could have a second.
Yes, sir. We're going to recess for five minutes.
I make, I make a suggestion. Can we move up, because Vincent's here. Can we move up this talent, the reappraisal? Because I'm not sure that's going to take a lot of time.
Yeah, and I think I'd cover what Brandon knows.
Okay.
Go.
Fine, thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
This is Julie, I'm a new person on the school board, so I care a little bit on a lot of this stuff that I've got to speak with. Um, I want to, I don't want everybody to, everyone to see the copy of the letter that we as a board wrote. Okay, so I just want to. If everyone has read that, I don't need to read it to you, other than the fact that I'm here to, uh, on behalf of the board to pursue, uh, or to urge this board to consider reappraisals to be done in the town sooner than later. Starting the process sooner than later. As everyone, you know, knows, the, the common level of appraisal has fallen steadily over so many years, as the letter says. Our concern as a board is that we are going to be below what the state threshold is this coming fiscal year. And we're going to be, you know, looking at a very difficult budget to pass. And, uh, you know, the reappraisals will be automatically, you know, the state's going to mandate that reappraisals be done. Knowing that takes three to four years, our concern is that we don't want to wait until that number comes in. We want to urge something to be done. Now we know that there, Brandon and Mike were at the meeting last Tuesday. We know that there's funds available or set aside, I should say, for that, for that service. There's a lot of work to do to, you know, hire an agency, do that, or use an agency to be proven to be used or whatnot. So I also, I'm also going to read another letter that was sent from our board chair to, well, Brandon and then to your board. But, um, it's just, this is from Anne Marie. She says, thank you for coming to last night's meeting for Mike and Brandon. The information you shared was helpful on standing in town's point of view. Mainly what I want to say is in our letter, one other comment I would make is for the town to be a bit more proactive in addressing the issue by perhaps setting a timeframe for reappraisals or say that anytime the CLA goes to be, goes below a certain amount, we will schedule a reappraisal. Uh, it seems as if we wait for it to get to the eighty-five percent threshold, which is what the state will mandate reappraisals be done. If the CLA goes below that, um, it's a bit late is we have to wait three or four years for the reappraisal to be completed. Property values could suddenly fall during that time. Wouldn't it be possible to cancel the reappraisal? So that's the main point I think we were trying to make in this school board meeting last Tuesday was that the board is concerned. We don't know what the number is yet. I know you have a little bit more information on that, but we don't know what the number is yet. But we, we're as a board concerned that it is going to be at or below that number. And even if it is a few percentage points higher, why can't we get a reappraisal started if it takes three years?
No, I was waiting for the chair. If you're done, I, I don't.
Yeah, okay, no. Um, I'm telling you that issue. There's one other separate request. Uh, the other topic, the school board's hoping that the town we're together on was the budget advisory committee. Uh, it's hard for us to find people willing to do it. And from what I read in the ordinance, it seems originally it was planned as a single committee that looked at both the town and school budgets. So that, um, so we're looking to see about combining a committee because we're having a hard time getting off here. And it's a lot, it's a lot of time.
Paul.
This is going to sound really negative. I just want to say I went to school here. My kids have gone to school here. And I've lived here all my life, which I've said before. What was your school budget last year that passed? Does anybody know?
No. It wasn't ten. It was not.
I think it was almost seven, wasn't it? Six point something?
Six point four, I think. It was six point four million dollars, okay? I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to choose my words. You're new. I'm trying to choose these very, very, very.
As long as you don't swear.
I, I heard an awful lot about how your board's concerned. Well, I'm not going to speak for our board, but I'm very concerned of a lot of stuff that goes on at the school. And first and foremost, six point four million dollars. I know there was some surplus too. I've seen the numbers up here of all the schools in the state of Vermont. Last year, I think you were sixth highest, if I remember right, fourth highest cost in the state. All right, I've asked for the numbers to find out where the curriculum and where the school, um, you know, like the standardized tests and all that. Are we fourth in the, in the state also for those?
Uh, I don't know.
So, no, 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 I, these are more rhetorical questions and this is where I'm coming with. I, I'm. I don't want to say I don't care about the appraisal for, for your stuff, but I don't really, I'm, I'm for the residents and what they're going to do here. Not for your budget or for your school. All right, that, that, that is just not in, in my real house right now. And I'm sorry, I was just going to say that. But I think we need to concentrate on where that money is and where the education level is. I don't know where that is. So it could be the fourth highest and we could be, and I'd be like, hey, if we're paying that much and we're right there on the top and the kids can do whatever, perfectly fine. I, I don't believe it is. The other thing too is we talk about an advisory committee for budgetary. I've been around here for a long time and I'm going to, I sound like Dave now talking this way, but.
God help you.
I've read, I've read newspaper articles. I've talked to people directly. You guys have had advisory committees and you don't listen to them. That doesn't mean you're not going to right now, but I, I've seen it. I've been there. I, I, I know it. So I'm, I'm confused that now we want help with that. It, it's totally two different entities. The budgetary committee that we have, I would think would want, I would want, I want them to focus here. I don't know what everybody else on the board does, but I, I, that's, you know, I don't, I don't think, my wife's on that committee. And I'm going to tell you right now, you don't want her looking your stuff over right now. She will find stuff. And I would love to see it all out here, so.
Dave.
I want to draw your attention to a totally different thing. Yes, because I, I, I want you to get a copy of this, okay? This is a copy of the entire CLAs of the state, okay, printed for every town. Dated August twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-two. They are the latest CLAs from each town, okay? I want to draw your attention. So when you go back to your board, you can tell, you can tell this. First of all, we want to work together, okay? This board has been very clear about the need for the school and, and so forth. It really is a, a banner. You know, the remodeling, I love it when I go in there and sit on the bleachers. And before, I've sat in, in fold up chairs where there wasn't enough room to go to the games, okay? Having said that, I am now asserting that the CLA does not have a really lot to do with reappraisal. So let's look at the eighth on, on this particular list that we have, and there's a whole lot of towns here. Let's look at the, and I'll, I'll just tell you why. Weathersfield CLA right now is eighty-seven point eight nine and its homestead tax rate is a dollar seventy-nine. Let's look at the eighth town down here, the school code eight, Baltimore, our neighbor. Baltimore CLA is eighty-four point three six. One point below the state mandated to, to, uh, to reappraise. Its homestead tax rate is a dollar sixty-seven. When, this doesn't add up for me. That's just one example. Let's go to West Windsor, which is in our own. WSSU, on the last page, I think. Okay, West Windsor is two thirty, number two thirty-five, and I don't know in number of towns or not. West Windsor's CLA is eighty-eight point nine five, one point off of ours. Its homestead tax rate is a dollar forty-six, thirty-three cents lower than ours. Thirty-three cents. I don't think CLA, I want to see the full formula that says common level appraisal and what is equated to come out with this tax rate. I think that the per pupil equalized spending is probably in there somewhere. We are mandated by law at eighty-five percent. Brandon gave us, and I don't, I didn't even bother to scroll through our packet. He's, I don't know if he presented it to you, about the last history of our ten CLAs. It has not dramatically changed until this year. It's not a secret in Vermont. When you look at this, this whole series in totality about property values. Heartland, I know firsthand, Heartland is number ninety-one. It went through reappraisal only two years ago. You would assume that it would be a hundred percent. It's already fallen to ninety point two four. Not a surprise to me. What is a surprise is those other two of our own neighbors right here that have very similar CLAs and they have much different tax rates on the homestead. So I would, I would close by saying that I don't think the CLA is tied directly to the reappraisal. There must be more to the formula.
Yep.
And I for one want to recheck what our listers submitted for data. So if everybody can imagine this, I'm going to try to make it really simple. There are sixteen hundred and fifty parcels in Weathersfield. There's about fifty that have only land, so there's sixteen hundred with buildings. Whether they're homes or not, they're assessable. So the CLA, the listers, once a year, I think it's in May, by May first, they assemble the sales data, the actual closings, and they forward those to the state as part of the information package in order to make up this thing. So this particular year when they do it, two thousand, it's on a five year rolling average. The last year, like two thousand eighteen, will fall off those actual sales of closings. I want to see what last year's was. I'd like to see them five years in a row of what the actual sales were. I've been tracking this really hard. My neighbor's property sold for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It was on the grand list already at three eighty. That's not a, 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 an immense jump. So that's where, if you put it in perspective of the amount of sales and the closings on the sixteen hundred parcels, in order to move the needle six or eight points on the CLA, we would have had to sell three, four, five hundred properties at double the value in order to move that five year rolling average.
I don't think it happened.
So I want to see exactly what is in the formula and I want to work together. It's not like we're trying to hold off something, but I urge you to take a look at all these towns. And it's, it's simply not accurate to say that the town's not reappraisal is going to cost all kinds of pennies. I just gave you one really, really startling. It shocked me today when Brandon wrote off this, this thing about West Windsor. Thirty-three cents lower in the tax rate when their CLA is only. Thirty-three cents lower in the tax rate, and their CLA is only one point off of ours. It's eighty-seven, or eighty-eight. Steve.
Your tax rate is, is driven mostly by your per pupil spending. That's it. Now, if you're, I'm not sure if you're reading effective tax rate or actual tax.
The actual, if you go on the education website, the state tax department, and Brandon printed off all the towns in Vermont about the homestead tax rate, and then the non-homestead tax rate that was used effectively for every town's tax bill this past year.
Is it the effective tax rate or the tax rate-
Actual.
-of the CLA?
Sorry, I'm rude. It's the tax rate that was set by the state on June twenty-ninth.
It says homestead tax rate, you know, under tax bills.
If you wanna make a comparison, and we're probably getting deeper into this than you want. The number one point is, I think the town is better off if there's some sort of cooperation, collaboration, coordination between the, between the two boards, for sure.
Just for information, the per pupil cost is twenty thousand nine nine, nine hundred ninety-three sixty.
And, and, so that's, that's your major driver in your tax rate.
So twenty-one thousand.
The whole point of the funding system is, equal spending towns will have equal tax rates. So any town that wants to spend twenty thousand dollars per pupil is gonna have the same tax rate. Now, that's assuming that the grand list is valued at a hundred percent of fair market value. So you take those two towns, if us and Baltimore wanted to spend the same amount per pupil, we'd have the same tax rate. If Baltimore grant, local values, their grand list is a hundred percent of fair market value, that's the tax rate they'll have. If we're at eighty-five percent of fair market value, we're gonna increase our tax rate so that we will collect the amount of money we would've collected if we'd been at a hundred percent value. Because, you see, if you have a hundred thousand dollar home and your tax rate is a buck, but that home is only listed at eighty-five thousand dollars, your tax rate has gotta be more so that you raise the same amount of money. So, but the per pupil spend, I know this is confusing, I've dealt with it for forty years, but, it's confusing, but equal spending towns have equal tax rates, and it's basically driven by your per pupil spending. The CLA also brings into account unfairness over time. It becomes increasingly, as your CLA drops, then the fairness that your property and my property are valued equally at a hundred percent, the unfairness increases over time.
All I'm saying is, you're pointing out a different narrative that's what's being charged here. I mean, John Arison's come in here two or three times saying, you know, reappraise, you're, you're the big bad guys holding up a lower tax bill for the school. And that's what I just heard that the town manager and the chair went to also. You're saying something entirely different, where the majority of the formula is per pupil.
Yes, but I don't, that is, that, that does not mean that I'm a proponent of delaying reevaluation.
I didn't say that.
I'm completely where my wife has been for years when she was the lister. It is in our benefit to reevaluate sooner rather than later.
Whoa, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve, finish it.
And I just, I just wanted to reiterate too, when I, I started that conversation, I said, this is gonna sound, I too wanna work with it. I would, I'll even, I'll, I'll have a different night and go to a, a, a school board meeting if we needed to sit there too. I, I think that's the only way that we're gonna figure all this stuff out, is if we're all together and not doing things in a bubble on, on each side. But again, I, I do, I feel very pressured from the school to say, you need to do this, you need to do this. We, I mean, even in this letter you gave, it was eighty percent, you know, they, they, they're projecting the school board supposedly. The, the only thing on, the closest one on this is eighty-one percent of Woodstock, and everything else is a lot higher, so. And, and, you know, making it sound like it's the, the income and, and, and everything is gonna be, it's gonna show either it's real or it's not real. The money is there, what you want. And again, a lot of the stuff that per pupil goes back to the fourth highest in the state. So I think we need to understand why this little bedroom community is the fourth highest in the state. And I don't know how to do that very well.
I think most people know, and others, I suppose.
Special ed in high school.
Actually not, actually not, because the per pupil cost would only be geared, there's no transportation, there's no high school, it's only K two A, and there's no special ed. They exclude that on everybody for a reason, so that it does become equal.
And tuition to Windsor, let's just say, for an exception, tuition to Windsor and Woodstock is a seven dollars difference. Almost eighteen, less than our per pupil.
So, so what you're, I, I guess if- I guess what I'm getting at is, is if we had our own high school, then we wouldn't be fourth highest in the state. I, I don't, I don't believe that. But that's where we need the numbers. Like I said, this is a data-driven thing. It's, it's real easy to try to get some of these numbers and understand that and put stuff down, and then there, then there's, it's just real numbers, so.
I, I'd like to ask a question, and, and this comes back to your opening statement about being whatever. What determines class size for students? How many students are in a class?
I don't have an answer to that.
I, I, I think-
I think-
Go ahead.
I don't know the answer, but I would think that the number of staff.
The number of staff?
The school is, all the schools in Vermont are supposed to have class size policies. So I would assume that the Weathersfield school is hurt down, and that will dictate your class size.
Okay. Those numbers are typically in the town report, I think.
Class size would be in the town report.
Yeah, I think we-
Certain policy isn't, is class size.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back and take a look, and I'll suggest to the board that we, we do the same, if we're gonna start working together. There, I, I, the reason I'm saying that is because I recall, I think, in, in a town report that I was looking at, eight students in, in, in two second-grade classrooms. Is that not correct? Good, good. I'm glad it's not.
There could be fifteen students in one second-grade classroom, though.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, there's, there's no denying.
Well-
Fourteen or forty-seven.
I, I guess the way I look at that is if I see eight students in two separate classrooms, well, that's two teachers teaching basically the number of people sitting at this table. And should, is that appropriate? That's just a question. But it doesn't sound like that's the case anyway, so. Go ahead, Lisa.
So I, I, I always think of some people saying, and we're off-topic and off-discussion, and it's not part of the agenda, but I can't help but follow up to some of Paul's comments. I'm a step ahead of you, because I went to the school, my children went to the school, my grandchildren are in the school right now, so you don't have grandchildren yet.
Not yet.
And I go to this school.
Oh, yeah.
So, and, and it's funny, I got called out today on Facebook saying I made a harsh comment to the town of Weathersfield. Well, you beat me, Paul.
Not you.
And, so, the, the, the budget is outrageous. I agree. The budget, every time it comes out, I am worried as a taxpayer, and I, it just boggles my mind how the budget can be so high. So it's maybe six point something now, but I think not too long ago, it was seven point, seven point dollars or whatever. It's gonna get to ten million dollars, there's no doubt about it. So a couple of things that I've always been told and I've heard is special ed is part of the reason, high school tuition is part of the reason, but there's so many different factors. And if you look at, you know, thinking back to when you guys are gonna change some zoning bylaws, and how everybody came to the meeting at the last minute, but they don't attend the zoning meetings or the planning commission meetings, that's what's happening right now in this room. How many people attend the school board meetings, the town meetings, the school board section of the town meetings? How many people pay attention to the budget all year? Just a handful of people. And so it's kind of hard to say, you know, we're, we're fourth highest. Are we fourth highest in as far as educational goes? I mean, I can think back to when I was in, in school and went to high school, my kids went to high school. Well, this field students do very well when they go on to high school, and that's a big adjustment for them to go from a K through eighth school, and go to Springfield High School or Windsor High School, where there's hundreds of students, and they do very well. I mean, they're at the top of their classes. So COVID has changed all of that, of course. So, and then to the budget comment that you made, I mean, they're looking for help with their budget. I think the select board appointed budget advisory committee members. I'm not sure how much participation they've done with the town budget. Every meeting I listen to, you guys have been working on the budget, meeting after meeting for a long time. You're working on it again tonight. I mean, what participation do you have from the budget people that you appointed? The last agenda on the website is May twenty-sixth from the budget advisory, and there's no minutes linked to that agenda. Have they even mapped? I mean, so you, you-
That's awesome.
You can't really talk negative about the school part of it, when, when it, it's, it's the town part of it as well. And to work together would be great. And to have, I think to have a combined budget people, that is the answer. I mean, if people on the town part of it are so good about the budget, they should be helping the school if the school needs help. I'm not saying the school needs help. I am saying the school needs help, because your budget is high.
I just, I just want, I, I, I just-
You gotta work together a little bit, and it's, it's not all bad news. That is a great school. And of course, they have their problems. Everybody has their problems. But like Dave said, you go there and you watch any type of event. If, if you have children or grandchildren, or even if you don't, you should still participate in the school. You pay school taxes, whether you have children there now, or you did have, or you're gonna have.
Or you nev-, or you never had.
Or you never had. You should still participate in the school. You should go to their soccer game and their basketball game, and you should go to their assemblies and walk their halls.
I, I don't, I haven't done that, but I, but I do support school, I told you so, Paul.
This is not negative, I just wanted to, I love having conversations, Lisa, I'm grateful that you're here and saying that. And I did, I did state that that was gonna sound negative, and, and I did, but I am, I am a little frustrated. Because I care so much about the school and everything, I, I wanna first, and you can put it in the minutes. My son, yes, he went on and was high honors in, in high school and everything else. My daughter, I pulled out and put her in Claremont. All depends on, on a lot of stuff. Secondly, I, to your comment about being involved with the school, I wish I had time. As I sit here on this board, as I chair the planning commission, as I'm on the water district, as I'm on everything else, I don't, I, I, I wish-
Drop one of them and jump over to the school.
I wish I had time.
Well, I was gonna ask for your letter-
Yeah.
-to appoint you to one of these.
And, and secondly, you, you said it's easy to say that we're fourth highest. It, it, it's not easy to say. It's, it's a number that we had that sat in front of us, so it's, it's true fact on, on, on that. But in the budget committee, I hundred percent agree with that. I don't know where they are either. My wife's on it. There's a meeting, I think, this week. I don't, I don't, I don't know who's, I don't know how that's run.
Steve is on it.
We have at least one of us remote, and-
Joseph Buble.
One who's present, and we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Thank you, Steve.
Nope, it was just the virtual. Nicole.
Yeah, you have Nicole getting in.
Nicole.
Hi, I'm Nicole. I'm on the school board too. So I was just, I just wanna chime in. We're twentieth in the state. And it's my understanding, with the, this is my first year too, but it's my understanding that the SU sets a lot of the budget. And that our, our board for our school doesn't really have a lot of control over what the SU sets for a budget. That's all I have.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because I recall, you know, I started getting involved in government, Dave, back when it was the, the meetings to do the consolidation and build that school, when the Perkinsville school still was over there. That's kinda when I started getting involved. And it was after that that the SU came along. And the whole presentation and, and everything, and Lisa, I'm sure you remember this, 'cause I, I think you were taking minutes at the time at the board, at select board anyway, was that it was gonna save us money to have the SU. Quite frankly, I have never really felt that that happened. It's never been that way. There have been questions that I've had shot to me, how do we, how do we either get out of the SU or get control over the SU budget as, as a separate vote from the school?
There are, what, three, Nicole, three members there tonight at the SU board meeting, which is tonight, which is why some of them are not here. But we're low representation versus major.
So just, just a question on that, from what Nicole said then. How would an advisory committee help you with your budget if the budget's already set by the, the SU?
Their, their share of it is.
They, they make their own budget.
Yeah, there's two.
The school has to make their own budget.
The school has their own.
We basically make our own budget with what's left.
And the, and who votes on the SU budget?
The SU.
The SU board.
And the board, and so we have three members. Jamie, Jamie, and Marie, and Mark, I believe, are our representatives to the SU. So they have the voting power.
Well, what can we do, what can we do together then? How can we do this? How can we figure this all out now that we're there? How do we?
I'll need to think about that. Dave, go.
I, I'll just make a few points. I'm gonna give you some advice. I was on the school board in nineteen ninety-seven when this committee came up to build the Windsor High School. The, the, the cost for the education of the high school was fifty-seven fifty. If, if I was on the school board right now, I'd stand up and say, listen to all you people that might, might vote no on the budget. We can, we can close this building down, and we can save five hundred thousand to a million dollars a year on twisting out. That's just a fact. I absolutely know that the per pupil cost is generated without special ed, without transportation. It's the basic K eight. It doesn't have high school tuition. I absolutely know that. Maybe that's why Baltimore's ta-, tax rate, by the way, is not quite as high as ours, because they now have an agreement to go all to Springfield, they closed their school. Here's the bad news about doing that. I'm a grandparent. I was a parent of kids that went through the school. And by doing that, which I don't support, you would force all parents and grandparents to get in their car, to go at two o'clock in the afternoon instead of four o'clock, to go make their game, or go make the school play, or go, go have any other activity in the school, which would cost those families dramatically more money than the taxes that are needed to support the school. That's why you don't do that. That's what I'd say if I stood up and said that. I would challenge people to vote yes, and don't look at it like it's, it's, it is, it's a reality that it costs money, but the fact of the matter is, there's an enormous trade of a value of being able to go five minutes or ten minutes to whatever it is that your child or grandchild goes to through the years, rather than going a half an hour or more.
And I will second that as a parent of two seven-year-olds who moved to this town specifically because this is an amazing school district.
Problem with, the problem with the SU is, they've been able to peel away lots of segments of the budgets that were always determined by the Weathersfield School Board. They took away the buses. They took away the support staff. BJ's got people that knock on her door, "I'm here to work today." She says, "Who are you?" "I'm here from the SU." I know how to get out of that. You have the same-
Have to be in this.
Nope, no, 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 because there are those now that are like, Westminster was forced to join one, and then they succeeded to get out. You have the same article, this would put enormous pressure on the administration at the SU. You have the same worded article, identical with even periods, to run through your council and say, "Shall the voters of each of these districts of Hartland, of Weathersfield, of West Windsor, and Windsor, vote on the SU budget?" You take it out of the hands by petition of the school boards. That's how you do it.
And that's the question I was asking.
For a large ballot. Just like anybody else does, by petition. You need five percent of the voting checklist. It'd be a lot of work, you know, going around checking, reassigning this. But they'd have to be the identical words in each town. The only word that would be different would be by that town.
That, that would put the school budgets back in the people's hands in their towns locally, and the SU budget equally in the people's hands. So they would, they, you're right, Dave, that would put some pressure on them to probably, possibly act a little different. 'Cause it seems like they're just, could you tell, could you, could you tell the board what the projected increase in the school budget is this year?
I did, I don't have it with me. I, I believe five hundred and fifteen thousand.
I was gonna say, I was at your meeting, I can give you a ballpark figure.
But we're only talking about the SU budget, not the school budget. So the SU budget has, has, you know, taken over all of these segments. Yeah, they vote on it, and then, and then it's a number that's just plugged into your budget. That's when you say, I can't do anything about it. Here's, that's how you do something about it.
Okay. Paul had, had a, had a question, whi-, which was, how do we unite the town and school boards working together? Budget committees. Uh, budget committees, um, yes?
Could I just suggest that you think about, um, having a subcommittee, maybe a couple of board members from each board? And, 'cause you're not gonna do anything, you're in the middle of the budget process. You're not gonna do anything really this year for the Budget Committee.
Correct.
But just have a couple of members from each board get together outside of the limelight and the recriminations and solutions for the school budget, and just talk about different ways that the two groups can work together and come back with a proposal to the Board. And the other thing I'd like to say is that regardless of how we all individually feel about the school budget, whether we're spending not enough, too much, whatever, it wasn't the school board in isolation that established the budget. We as a town voted on that budget-
Absolutely.
To improve the level of spending.
That's correct. Well, we haven't done the one that's coming forward yet.
No. It was seventy-two thousand six hundred per kid because we voted to do that.
Yes, that's, that's right, Steve, thank you.
And it hasn't been too close lately.
I've got another, uh, possible proposal, and that is, you, you, up here on this board, and I don't think we did a whole lot of that this year. Uh, we have appointments, uh, like to Town Highway, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe this board should have a representative to the school board, and the school board should have a representative to the select-
Like an ex officio.
And, yes, exactly. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, so that, so we're at, at least during and through the budget process, we're working together and communicating what's going on.
Yeah.
Paul?
And, and my other recommendation too is sometimes, I, I can, until, I, I think, let's be honest, I think until we get through some meetings together as the total group, I, I think there could be, like Steve said, I, I, and that's the back and forth, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna help anything. So one of the things that, we have a transfer station, um, a, a multi-town group. And we actually have someone from regional planning that actually chairs that. So it's not like, well, you're Weathersfield, you're, you're chairing it, or this, or this. So, so I'm also curious about maybe if we do meet, or something of that nature, that we have someone like that, that's kind of a neutral party that can help moderate some of that and, and, and keep that going, so that, and then it feels, i- until we get going, that's all. I, I just, I'm on for it, so.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna try to get this wrapped up. We're talking, we're supposed to be talking about town reappraisal. Where's the Board on town appraisal, uh, at this point?
I'm, I'm, I'm good right now, not wanting to do any.
Cal?
I'm not worried about it right now.
David?
I just could outvote him, so it's, it's not Dave's fault, it's sweet enough. Perfect.
What do you mean? I didn't think you, I didn't think you were in favor of it either, I thought you said, wait a minute.
No, I'll jump right on that train.
He's just jumping right off. Why not?
Well, that, so I think it's, the unanimous consensus at this point with the Board is, is to just kinda wait this out right now. I, I'm not sure Steve necessarily agrees with that either, at, at this point. But where, where we are, we're, um, I, I guess the only other point I would make is, I think there's a, a bit of, it wouldn't be four years for them to get here and do the appraisal, and I think you might have cleared that up. It, it's about four years before it actually would be done and have any effect on the grand list or tack or CLA.
I don't have, I don't even have any of that information, that's a lot of talk in the wind. I do, I don't, I don't know where anybody's got that from. I don't know who's alleging that it's gonna fall to eighty. It may be, it may be very well true that it's gonna fall in our lap by itself to go before, to go eighty-five. We're not gonna break the law. The law says-
Right, that's correct.
The law says we gotta do eighty-five. We, that history that Brandon gave us, it's been rolling around in the nineties. This is the first year that it ever went down to eighty-seven, eighty-nine, okay? So the last, the three, three years ago was ninety-three, eighty-nine, then it went to ninety-three, one-one, that's point seven.
At the, at the school board, I told you about the property. I've talked to that person again, he corrected me a little bit on the numbers, but he's also talked to his real estate agent that has said, right now it's fourteen percent, that dropped off of his value in, in, in almost three months. And she's predict, projecting that it'll be twenty by April, that that property's dropped in value. Properties are dropping in value, so-
Interest rates are going up.
And interest rates are going up, yes.
So that, that, I mean, that's, that's why.
Well, but it's property value and appra- and, and appraisal that drives the CLA.
Right, the appraisal, not necessarily, but a lot of times the appraisal-
I, I wanna get wrapped up with this and move on, we've beat it to death already.
Thank you.
Y'all set? Thank you, uh, budget discussions. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Uh, Brandon, you're up, I guess? You wanna take us through this?
Yeah, uh, how do you want, how do you wanna handle it? Do you want to do another budget overview and then go through the list here? The first up on the list is the compensation and benefit study.
And what changed in that?
So during the last meeting, the Board requested that we add an additional layer to the compensation study for the Highway Department, um, which includes to present each of our comparable towns contribute to employee healthcare. Um, so this information was collected using a similar approach to the compensation study. The findings are eighty-one towns were analyzed with an average population of thirty-two fifty-six. Thirty-five percent contribute a hundred percent of healthcare costs for employees of the municipalities that contribute a hundred percent. The average pay rate is twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents in the Highway Department, which is ninety-one cents above the average pay rate, um, according to the compensation study. Three, four percent contribute ninety-five percent of healthcare costs for employees. And of that group, um, the average pay rate in the Highway Department is twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents an hour. So it's actually a dollar and fifty-four cents below the average pay rate. Twenty-five percent contribute ninety percent of healthcare costs for employees of those municipalities. The average pay rate is twenty-two fifty-six, which is twenty-nine cents below the average pay rate. Um, twenty-three percent contribute eighty-five percent, this is where we're at. And of those municipalities that contribute eighty-five percent, the average pay rate is twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents in the Highway Department, which is one penny above the average pay rate. And then we have fourteen percent that contribute eighty percent of healthcare costs for employees. And of those municipalities, the average pay rate is twenty-two dollars and thirty cents, which is fifty-five cents below the average pay rate. There's a data summary there that basically summarizes what I just stated.
And we have, uh, the, um, I, I didn't bring last, uh, meeting's paperwork with me. The ac- what's our average, um, compensation? We're, you say we fall into the, uh, twenty-three percent, but we're also below the, uh, the hourly rate, the average hour, pay rate, right?
No, we're a penny above.
No, that's not what it says.
Of the eighty, of the twenty-three percent that contribute eighty-five percent for healthcare costs for employees, um, the average pay rate is twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents in the Highway Department.
What is ours?
In our average rate, just give me one second.
Paragraph does say, Kelly's right.
Well, Cal, Cal, I, I understand that, but it's not ours.
It's not ours, it's somebody else's.
The average, the average.
Right, the state average is a penny different.
So we are at, excuse me, just one second. So we have various positions, um, we have positions that make-
What's our average? In the highway? That's what we're looking at as an average.
So we have, like the average of, the average, so you're, you're looking for the lowest paid employee and the highest paid employee and-
All and add them up and divide them by how many you have.
Excluding the superintendent, that's based, the average you have is based on highway workers.
Right, and this, and this is actually based, based on all employees.
Why not? That's an average.
But that's what happens on the rest of them, you're just trying to be equal. You, you, yeah, but anybody that knows anything about real data, you gotta look at what the standard deviation is.
That's what I was-
You can't, you can't just, you can't just do that.
That's why it didn't click with me.
Yes.
A town that has a low average might have all the people-
Gotcha.
A town that has a high average might have all the people who've been there for twenty years.
So the, if it matters, it's twenty-
We're probably about a buck, about a buck below average.
Right.
Just doing this quickly. We have three people that are paid two dollars less than average. We have one person that's paid a dollar fifty more than average, and one person that's almost at average. So if you just quickly try to do the math on that, we're probably about a buck behind.
Okay.
And our, our service is twenty-plus years and right about twelve, thirteen years, and one person is a year and a half. You're higher on how long people have been here, so we should be higher than the average.
So where, where I'm going with this is, um, so following that review, I recommend that the Highway Department employee wages, uh, be amended to average. And to do this, the Board asked what it would take in the last meeting, um, and it would take seven thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents this year to do that. And we, we do not, we are not hiring another, um, employee this year, so it wouldn't-
I was waiting for you to finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't look at me, I'm, my facial expressions, don't look at me.
Yeah, he doesn't have the floor until I give it to him.
Nope, that's why I-
We do have a, I guess it's better to say it this way, we do have a projected surplus in the Highway Department this year, so it wouldn't create above, a, a budget deficit.
Paul?
I, I just wanna be on the record and say that I, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna say that we can afford to pay our people more and bring them up to what an average would be because we have one less employee. If anything, I'm looking at that going, well, we had an employee set number here for a while, and we needed it. Now all of a sudden, we just, we couldn't fill it, we had problems with Brandon people, and then, well, since we don't have that, we can pay more. I wanna differentiate those two. I wanna compensate someone based on the fact that they're worth what they do and what is getting paid in the area and around. And sure, it's absolutely nice if you can utilize some of that from something, fine, but what happens if we need that person back again? Then we come back and go, oh, I wanna, I want those two, I, I don't like those two tied together.
I guess I said it wrong, Paul, what I was trying to say is that we have a projected surplus at the end of the year, so it wouldn't affect the budget. As in it would, we wouldn't end the year in a deficit because of it.
Are, are we getting rid of that one person then, or is that staying on the books?
No, they're gone, that's gone.
Okay.
Right.
So just, just a little history, our Highway Department used to have nine people. Right now, we are supposed to have seven. We've had six for almost two years. And folks that are working there have been doing more work, we've, we've succeeded in getting things done. And I really want to get them paid to where they should be paid. Their concern is several of them are close to retirement age. And this is coming from them, that we really need to do something with the pay, so when they retire, they can be replaced. These are people that care, and will, you know, I, that's the whole principle behind it. They've been doing it for two years almost. Um, we would be in a better place if somebody wasn't outing them this year. Beyond his control, it's beyond our control. Our concern is to get our pay up to where people are making what they should be making, and we can get people to come to work for the Highway Department in the future at a reasonable rate and not have to be a shock to our tax dollars. And this is a great opportunity to be able to do that.
No, I, I see where you're coming from.
And that's, that's why we're, a lot of other towns are struggling, and they're jumping the pay rate up, and it's not a budgeted transition. And it hurts, and I, we are all, as a Highway Department, trying to work in the town to avoid that. Um, we've had discussions, they're doing the work, um, in the summertime, it's a lot, it's a lot smoother than it is in the winter. But we are creative and we have managed, and it's not, we're, we're a good crew. And that's what they're trying to do, is get, wear it and get some pay, and invite people to come in the future when these guys start to retire.
So when I talked to Brandon about this and Ray, Ray, I think, originally made this really clear, and I still didn't get it. But I think I've got it now. When I was talking with Brandon, um, at our last meeting, we were having a discussion about a pay raise increases going into the twenty-twenty-four budget, okay? What Ray is saying is, we have that money in the budget now, and those pay raises can happen now. That doesn't mean there's also a pay raise in the twenty-twenty-four budget, other than the COLA. The COLA was, but that's a separate issue. We simply have the money available that we could, we could do that bump. And basically, what it comes down to is giving the department and the town manager the money they're asking for to do the job, and it's, you know, well, seven thousand dollars, that's just the wage compensation, right?
That's the full, so FICA, um, retirement, workers' compensation, and unemployment is all calculated within that number.
And that's, and, and that's just the money that they're asking for, and, and that would then automatically be in next year's budget, because it would happen now, so. That's the way, and like I said, I didn't understand that when, the way you put it the first time we talked.
We're trying to do transitional change, not have it be a huge jump.
Correct.
In the future, if we have to make more adjustments, we can.
Right.
The long-term goal is if you can stay close to COLA as possibly, as you possibly can, then you don't start slipping behind. What happens is, over years of high COLA, you can't do that, without a huge tax increase, all the towns start slipping behind. They have to make a huge adjustment, and that hurts. So we're trying to figure out how to do it slowly, and slowly.
Yep, so, you know, this year, we have not been voting on separate issues and separate budgets. And, and we're not gonna stop, but that's, that's what's happening with that budget. That's where that budget number's gonna end up, is in the wages and compensation lines in the Highway budget. And have you corrected the budget to show that? Or have you, have you inserted that part into, into the budget?
Well, tonight, we're talking about the cost of living, so in order for me to finalize-
But before we get to that, Brandon, did you put that number into the, into the budget in the Highway? The seven thousand dollars, did you put that in there?
It would-
That's this year's budget, it's already in there. We're talking about next year's budget now.
Yes, but, but next year's budget, when you created it, was it already in there?
This is something new that we're talking about tonight.
Exactly, and I'm asking you-
If it's approved, then it would go into the budget.
I'm, you get to put it in the budget, it's your budget. We haven't approved the budget yet, so.
Yeah, I know, but I can't make the adjustment until I know for sure that the budget, like, if this is approved, then I put it in the budget for next year.
'Cause it's automatic, 'cause it's there, it's real.
It's not there yet.
And it'll be double.
What, I'm sorry?
So this is the first step?
No.
And then it goes into the budget?
No, it won't be double.
Why not?
How's it, how's it gonna double?
'Cause you're talking about, Ray, maybe I misunderstand. You're talking about raising the, four Highway people will get raises. One, they'll get, they'll become, they'll be paid the average. So I mean, three of them will get two-dollar-plus raises, you know?
No.
No, we're not, we're not breaking it down that way. The department is asking for seven thousand dollars. How they, personally, for me, I don't micromanage. How they just, how they distribute those funds within those departments is up to them.
You're gonna dole that seven thousand dollars out over the next six months.
Correct.
So you're gonna raise their, for a six-month period, you're gonna raise their pay by seventy-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, so, um, you would be-
You're talking about a twelve-month period next year, and presumably, you're not gonna decrease their pay next year.
Now I follow you.
So if you're using seventy-six hundred dollars for six months, you need twice that for twelve months.
Exactly.
That's correct, thank you.
We're also not paying next year an employee at seventy-two thousand dollars with insurance. But that's already been taken out of the budget, if I understand that right, but the fifteen thousand hasn't been put in.
Yes, correct, you, you are correct, Steve, thank you.
So what you would see for next year, um, is you'd see expenses increase by seventy-six, twenty-two, seventy-eight times two, around fifteen thousand. Which is consistent with my request in the last meeting.
That's, that's- And that, that, but that, if you remember, that's what we talked about in the last meeting, was the fifteen thousand dollars. Remember, I, I said, put that, remember that? Go, Dave.
No, I don't, I'm getting confused, 'cause I'm, you know, two days with no- No, I don't, I'm getting confused because I'm, you know, two days with no power.
You're still happy, though.
Yeah. I was doing the math, so, you know, if I heard right, seven men at seventy-six hundred dollars is a thousand eighty-five dollars per man. But it's for six months, as Steve pointed out. The problem becomes after that because it's twelve months, not six.
That's what he just pointed out, yeah.
Six people.
Which I, he pointed out, so that's where I, I was doing the division and then the, I never heard fifteen thousand, I heard fourteen and I didn't know what that meant a week ago or two weeks ago. But I'll set all that aside for a moment. Then, so that's what's considered to be an adjustment, I guess. Which I don't know, uh, I don't know if it's right or wrong because we went through the budget process last year. We did, we did adjust some pay. We did get a surprise on the HSA. It got caught, you know, we were told that there wasn't a, um, anything, um, going up on healthcare. And then I think BJ picked up, wait a minute, they like doubled the deductible. We added, the danger in doing this is we added like five hundred dollars. And I remember voting on it up here at the board. And then all of a sudden, Brandon came back and said, well, wait a minute, it's really not five hundred dollars we didn't vote on. We voted on five hundred dollars for each employee of the town to contribute into the HSA, which immediately turned into thousands of dollars. So there's a little danger in this High Wire Act because we're actually talking about last year's budget right now. With seventy-six hundred dollars added.
Well.
Because you wanted, I read that thing, it said you wanted to make it effective next week.
January first.
Yeah. Because he has the money in the budget to do it. But, but the change is the fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand for next year's budget. That is the change.
But we're talking about two different things.
Well.
You know, the.
Yes, we are. One is the change to, to, to give the fifteen thousand dollars to the highway department. Two, apply as they, these guys, um, determine amongst the, the, the men that work there. And then the other is, well, we have a surplus and we can do it.
That's the cost to next year's automatic into the budget. The, the, the question is, do you, do you up the pay, the hourly pay in middle of a budget year, or the middle of a past budget? And let the administration move that. Then moving forward, the town manager assembles what the pay raises were. And those will be reflected on whatever increase in pay we happen to do. So in other words, let's say somebody says, let's say somebody gets twenty-one, twenty dollars an hour, let's make it really easy. Let's say this adjustment moves them up to twenty-one dollars an hour. Then the budget is going to have to reflect five or eight or twenty-seven percent of twenty-one dollars an hour.
That's correct.
Yeah, and if you look at the cost of living, uh, cost of living adjustment sheet, the second page here, and you go down to the bottom in the green, that would be, so if this is approved tonight, then those would be the increases. So you look at the green when you choose a percentage for cost of living. So as you can see, for ten percent, it changes from one twenty-two to one thirty-eight. For five percent, it would change from sixty-two to seventy-seven. For two percent, from twenty-six to forty-one.
But this doesn't include the pay raises that you want to give them.
So.
It does.
This one does.
This one does.
If adjustments are made, the green one.
Yeah.
The orange one is if no adjustments are made.
Right.
So.
Right. So my, my next, my last question.
Yes, sir.
My, my next question is, and I know, I know we all got wrapped up in this, you know, the tax increase and the taxes on a two-hundred thousand dollar house and whatever. Are you in any way, uh, do you have any other questions on potential revenue other than taxes?
Do I have any questions?
No. Any other information that may? So, I mean, to raise taxes should be as the last resort to us. And, you know, the narrative of this is, so it makes the, it makes the decision a little harder to say, oh God, we got to raise taxes by whatever it is, you know, eleven cents or.
It's the worst case scenario.
Yes. So, but the best case is, and I heard somebody offer the, the Habitat Humanity, there are so many things right now in state funding that are coming in above revenue sources.
Yes.
And highway is kind of a big one.
Correct.
But you don't have any other information that would help that get lower?
I've heard John say that the revenue was higher, but I don't have a precise number to stick in the budget, so I'm.
You just have to go with the information you have.
Correct.
Based on the CLA argument, we might expect a, a nice bump in the, in the grand list, too. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to go back to quickly the, the employees and, um, the money and what we're talking about. I just wanted to clarify facts. The fact is, our highway department employees are underpaid from the national, from the state average, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The other fact is, we're down people and the people we have are working more and doing more, correct?
Um, right now, we do have a man out, so.
We have an injury still.
Two people.
Right, but how consistent has that been? You said, you, yeah, two years' worth of, of down, so.
Two years, Dave.
Okay, so, so just, I'm just clarifying facts, I don't really. You, you can do an adjustment anytime and throughout the year. I don't care whether it's in the middle of a budget season or not. Companies do it all the time. It's no different than a company here. So all I'm saying is facts are, are employees for the highway, I don't know about the rest yet. From the study that we've gone, are underpaid. And we're undermanned and have been, so we're asking them to do more.
Um, the highway department is the only department that I'm asking for an adjustment.
No, that's fine, I'm just, those are just, those are facts.
What do you think?
No, I'm, no. I'm just, I do agree with that, I do agree with that.
Okay. So, Paul, what you just said was, to some degree, it's factual and I agree. As, as a company can do the adjustment anytime they want, at any point. He could do the adjustment, he has the money in the budget, he could just, as, as the town manager and department head, I suggested that it was probably a good idea to discuss that with us first, which is why we're talking about it.
No, no, that was, my, my point was.
No, I get, I know, I know, I just thought it was appropriate to talk about it. And not just, go ahead and do it, because I, I agree with you that that's, you know, I think it's, I think they're worth it. There's other discussions that, that go on about trying to hire somebody. We've been trying to hire somebody, haven't we, Ray? And how's that working out? And Ludlow?
Um, they upped the rate to a lot more and they got one person.
And anywhere, anywhere else, where we're seeing?
Looking for somebody, they just had a discussion about their rates and I think they've increased drastically. They're going to hire, start higher rate, whichever.
So, what do you mean?
Okay. So, do, do you want to vote on this, Brandon?
I do.
On, on, on the, uh, to authorize the compensation increase?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I was under the assumption that last year, when we got to this thing, that we gave Brandon permission to give pay raises without us having to vote on it all the time. As he saw, I thought that was something that we decided last year.
But for this particular one, it creates a budget increase in the FY twenty-four budget.
Well, it would anyways.
Anytime you do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what is the difference?
I think you just want to be transparent, sorry.
I think that was nice, that he was transparent.
That's what I'm trying to do, just make sure we're. Yep. So I guess that means, we, do you, do you want to vote on it? You want to take the consensus on it, you just, you know?
I'm fine if he makes the decision, I mean, that's, it should be up to him. In, in all reality, if somebody has done that much work to get a vote,
Yes.
but they don't even need to.
Yes.
I guess he can back up his argument when it comes time, if we had an issue. So I'd rather trust my town manager and the highway department and whatever they've come up with information as far as that. Only because they have been given previous.
And they know who should get what, it's not us to decide who gets what.
I, I do not want to micromanage, that's why I keep saying it.
I think that's his job.
Give them the money they're asking for.
That's our job.
I think if we.
Our job is to look at the budget after he presents it to us.
Okay, so if, so with that in mind, assuming that that, those pay raises are going to take place, now you need to look at the green column down below and enter into the next item, which is the cost of living adjustment. Because e, 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 each, in the green column, it's factored in the, the pay raise that we just talked about.
Yeah.
Now you got to talk about, what are we going to do for cost of living in the twenty twenty-four budget?
I was just going to say, but that is a separate issue now that we're dealing with. It's across the board for all employees, for the town.
That's for everybody.
Okay.
And that, that.
That's what I thought we were going to be talking about tonight.
And that's what this reflects down here, is the total cost, whi, which will affect the tax rate.
In the green.
In the green. So.
For every thirty-three thousand is a penny.
Brandon, what is your recommendation for a cost of living increase?
Five percent.
So that's what, that's the recommended cost of living increase, five percent.
Across the board of every employee?
That, that would be for everybody.
Absolutely.
Every, okay, do I hear a motion for that?
To, I'm sorry, motion for what?
Uh, to set the cost of living increase at five percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion on the COLA increase? Anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor of setting the COLA at five percent for fiscal year twenty-four signify by saying aye.
Wait, did you, one second. I was going to say, Dave, do you want to speak?
No, well, you didn't give a lot of time. I'm just thinking to myself, okay, wait a minute.
Well, usually, you're quicker.
No, I already told you I was in a sleeping coma here, for two days with no power.
You want, want the rest of that?
Mountain Dew, yeah.
For more, so.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I guess, I guess, would, I would, what I would ask is, um, whether, how did somebody, how do you fit that into the narrative? To support that as the budget and it's an entirety? And the second question would be, each department came in, um, and presented to the administration that they kind of wanted.
Eight percent more.
Eight or more of whatever. So will this, you know, now that they're all not here, will this create a,
Yeah, because it is.
A vision in the next meeting of employees that will, and I'm not saying to back up. No, 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 no. I'm just, I've been here done that before. I want to make a comment too, if I can, not a negative one.
Well, do we want to answer Dave's questions first, or do you want to comment?
Well, I can comment on a couple of things. I have no problem myself, trying to justify increases to people for their pay, like for taxes. If that, I think that's what you were wondering. I, I don't know about the question of other, other groups wanting more. I, I, what I, I guess what I want to say is, I'm okay if the number's higher personally. That's just me, and I have no problem being on the record saying that. Because I, 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 I value and I understand what's going on. Because we all, some of us are all feeling it, that, that do get that kind of income. But, um, I went on the recommendation of what the town manager said, that's why I made that, that, that motion. But I'm also open to pull that and go more. The last time I sat at the firehouse and talked about this, I spit out a, a high number that everybody said no to years ago. And, and I, I'll do it again if we want to. I just wanted to be reasonable and be able to know that something would go through and not throw something out, if people.
Just a sec, and I'll come right to you. Let me, I changed the way we did the budget this year for the reason that we would be able to look at everything all at once and, and make a, an informed decision on what the final tax rate or increase would be. And there are still some things that aren't completely determined. We're close, and where are we at right now? If, if we went with five percent, what are we looking at for a percent, uh, increase in the budget? Was it five cents, four, four cents, five cents?
Five point three cents.
Five, five point three cents. So that does not include, um, I believe there's seventy thousand dollars worth of, um, separate articles to fund reserve accounts. That's another two cents. Don't forget. Okay, Wendy, now you can.
I, I know we're not having discussion yet because we don't have it. But see, the reason why I went with that was just the fact that the town manager had said five percent. I was shocked, he only came up with five percent. How was I going to argue that when across the board, I, every business person that I know is dealing with eight percent? So I just was, how can I, you know, if that's what, maybe he talked to all the department heads and everybody came up with that? Then, what, what, with the way inflation is?
And that is, that is a big deal, if that happened.
So I was going to discuss after we did the motion and whatever and say.
That's where we are.
We're in discussion, so.
Right.
Yeah.
No, because.
No, we're not.
You, you, you're correct, you led us, you led us up into this budget process to gather all the information except one fatal flaw.
Why?
The fatal flaw is, and I don't think so anyway, that the manager did not meet with all the department heads. Or, or maybe he did, say that I'm advising that we stay at five percent. Because if, if he, if he did, then it's a done deal and it's wonderful.
Right.
But if he did not, we're going to have a whole row on January fifth.
Yeah.
Going to say, in this budget process, we were led to believe that it could be eight, now it's not, what happened.
Right.
No, I never led anybody to believe it was going to be anything.
Requests ranged from five to ten percent.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Why are we at five?
Why are we at five?
I was going to ask.
Because that was an easy, because I mean.
I'll answer that.
Didn't I did last year too?
Ladies, I will answer that for him. I, I think he, what he's looking at is not trying to jump right out with this huge tax increase. And, and, and it does have an effect on that. You are the board that makes this decision and, and it's here for that purpose.
And I'm glad that you did that, that you said that, and I'm glad that Brandon did that because historically, I know for a fact that the school teachers signed a contract of three, three and three. They're, they're, and I know they're unionized, but you can bet that the next contract that comes up, they're going to say, wait a minute, the cost of living was eight, and they're going to go right back into the mode of, we need like fifteen or something. So if you think the budget's bad, if you think the budget's bad now, that's going to. So we have been historically, despite some of the comments in the previous meetings, there have been pay raises of three percent or so, there's never been zero. The rub has come with healthcare, with the cost.
Yeah.
I did the math, and I think if I'm right, I ran it by you through an email. And Ray brought it up about the healthcare contribution. The healthcare for MVP did not cost the town the same money, it cost more money, that's a fact.
Yes.
Yeah.
So he brought it up a, a couple of meetings ago, where it's going to cost the workers thirty-three cents an hour. Well, I scratched my head and went home and I wanted to know the cost of the town. Town's cost on MVP's increase, I came up two dollars and two cents an hour, per employee.
I, I think it was a, uh, that was, that was a dollar sixty-nine, wasn't it?
It depends on the plan.
Yep. Eighty-six percent, though, is the town's responsibility to pay the premium. So when you run that out on two thousand hours, so, yes, we want to be fair with anybody who works for the town. But we do have to look at the totality of cost and what is going on that way too.
Well, and these are other factors that come into why he didn't come down here with eight or nine or ten percent. Because there are other factors included here. What, we have a motion in, in a second. Are you guys comfortable with that staying there? You want to adjust it up, down, you want to?
Did, did you run through the department heads about your proposal?
That's what I want to do. The five percent, I did with the highway department, um, the police department. There were a couple of departments that, like the town clerk's office, I did not.
What, what did you say?
What was the response from the people that you did?
Yeah.
The highway department and I came into an agreement at five. The police department was okay at five, that's what their request was. However.
That's, that's assuming that the pay adjustment was going to go into.
Let him finish, right.
That's assuming if the pay adjustment went into place. And then if it didn't, then the request would be done, from the highway department.
And.
And then my recommendation would change tonight.
This is based on keeping, trying to keep as even as possible. That helps the budget the most. And that was my side was trying to help the budget. As an employees, as the employees, obviously, they need to get more, want to get more and keep up. If we don't, it's a catch-22, I want to help the budget too. But if we do this, we risk long-term slipping back behind again. And we can make another adjustment in the future to get jumped back up to be where we need to be, to keep people's pay. So, I'm torn.
Okay.
Go ahead, Luke.
So I do think that if, if you're, you know, we, we already looked at the last time that the police were paid, maybe even above average, so on and so forth. If we haven't met with the other people that may be upset by the fact that, well, the police, they're, they're happy with five because they're already above, or the highway, which is great, we're going to increase there. But if the other people in, I mean.
But they're not. They're, they're where they're supposed, they're where they should be. That, that was what the compensation.
But I, but Dave was just saying, has, has Brandon met with them? And are they comfortable, did, if, if they haven't been met with, and they're not agreeable, the fact that, you know, with five percent? It is true, what, what are we gonna be faced with? Because no matter what, everybody else is dealing with the, the cost of inflation. So I do think that.
Well, you, you guys.
COLA was eight point seven percent.
Who's left? Who's left to talk to? You, yourself. Talk to yourself. Am I happy with five percent? Ask yourself. Yes, sir. I'm just, I, I put you on the spot, I didn't.
He's, who's me, he's fine.
You, you, well, taking on, taking the, the highway and with whatever that you spoke with them about, and the police, that automatically took up like a really lot of employees. So who's left?
The, the town clerk's office.
Treasurer, accountant, you've got two secretarial positions in there, you've got two town clerk positions.
I think Land Use only wanted four percent.
The transfer station is included in the highway stuff.
And, and the compens-, and the compensation report that we went through at the last meeting shows you where they were.
Okay, and Mike, they came here to that, they came here to the meeting, cause when they thought maybe they were supposed to fight for whatever it is that they wanted, but now they're not here. We, we could be stuck in a situation where now all of a sudden, this is where they would've spoke up, and they haven't.
So.
So I wa-, I do wanna make sure we're being fair.
Do you wanna go more?
I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna pull my motion.
Okay.
Can we, can we give the town, it's nine o'clock. Can we give the town manager time to meet with those persons that he did not meet with and come back on January third?
Right.
Sure. Uh, well, let's, where, uh, does that mess you up at all on anything? Or are we gonna have to have another meeting? We, we okay with January the second?
What is the direction, like, where am I?
Well, you said you've already met with the highway and they okayed whatever that you felt, whatever. You met with the police and they said they were okay. There's, so there's.
Everyone else is requesting eight, eight point seven to ten percent.
Okay.
I already have the information.
Well, we're not gonna give, I, I don't support, uh, uh, because I've seen the compensation study. I don't see that approach. I don't wanna make a deal with highway and say five, cause you're not good enough, and then somebody else is gonna get ten. That's not working for me.
No, 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 it's gonna be one across the board, whatever that is, the, the way I see it. Steve?
Did you meet with the entire highway department? And everybody in the highway department is in agreement at five percent? Or did you and Ray meet and talk about five percent?
Yes, Ray and I met, and we talked about adjustments in five percent.
And highway department does not know about the adjustments. They know a little bit, but.
They do now.
I'm not gonna tell them. Well, I wasn't gonna tell them anything, cause I didn't know. I don't wanna get their hopes up. So we asked for ten percent. We, we think that we can do adjustments in five, but, um, again, that's us being, trying to be financially, fiscally responsible as possible. If the board wants to do more, and think that that's appropriate, then that's up to the board. I mean, that's how I feel.
What do the adjustments do on a percentage basis, do you think? You have to do the calculation. I think you do it in your head. You're pretty shocked.
So what is the adjustment?
It's gonna add like another one or two percent.
To the budget.
The adjustments that you made.
To what?
To, to like highway.
It's in the green. It's already in there.
It adds, uh, five percent.
Oh, so it pulls them up to ten percent?
Right.
You sure?
Yes.
On an annual basis? The adjustments, they're not a five percent adjustment in, in pay.
That's, a dollar per hour, per employee is, uh, around five percent.
You're a twenty-dollar employee, twenty percent, you lost. Five percent is.
That will be the measure that others will measure against you. Oh, let's see, okay, the highways, no wonder they're all happy with five percent, cause they just cut five percent.
But the highway.
But that's a correction in, in.
No, 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 I get it. But, but then the, if I'm a worker, I'm gonna say, how come you didn't compensate me? Cause I'm worth it too, if I'm the treasurer.
The adjustment was made because of the compensation study that was conducted. Um, so that brings them up to average.
I just bottom lined what the effect would be.
Some of the other people in that compensation study are above average already.
And that was taken into consideration when I made my recommendation.
Right, but that was for that timeframe, not with what the new cost of living is. I get that. I get that when the study was done, across, that was, that was, what do you wanna call it, the median, but that's not for 2023. And that's where people are coming in here and where they're asking, or whether they're coming to businesses or whoever it is. We're talking about next year. And I, and I'm just saying that, I, I wanna make sure that they're not gonna look at it, well, highway got brought up to where they should've been, but now we're gonna, but now we're gonna suffer for the fact that their budget got affected over here, when in reality, n- no matter what.
I, I think a better explanation for it, where you're trying to get to is other towns, and we heard this already, other towns are doing eight point seven. Brandon, there are other towns that are, that are.
Ten to fifteen.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I, I just feel like we all laughed at five percent because we were in shock.
What I'm trying to say is, at that point, they're no longer gonna be at the average or above.
That's what I was trying to say, is that we're not, we're not looking at what it was. We're looking at what are people, w- when people make decisions, they're making a decision on, they don't always know what everybody's gonna do in the same business or whatever, what they're gonna do next year. They're taking a, an idea.
So we don't necessarily have to wait for them to talk to Brandon and tell him what they're comfortable with. What we need to, what we need to do is look at, what number do we wanna set? And what number are we willing to put before the voters of this town to support the operations of this town? Which is this number tonight. We could get it done. Pick a number. I'm not, I, I, I'm not, I'm listening to you. If you guys wanna put a motion on the floor for eight percent, do it. I, I mean, right? If, if not, this is what it'll change it right here. Eight, eight percent will, would add a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars across the budget.
The, the issue will be, an eight percent across the board would, would then also be reflective of an, of an adjustment mid-season, or mid-year of an additional five percent correction.
For what?
Particularly for highway. Which is okay, I'm just saying, let's look at the reality of what's happening. So you gotta understand that. Once you make that move, that's all.
Yeah.
I know it's nine o'clock, just quick.
So I'll make a motion at eight percent for the COLA.
Do I hear a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Motion's been made in a se-, in a second, and we can discuss it. For eight percent.
Let me just ask this, this quick question. Highway came, this is the facts. Highway came to you and said, I feel that we're underpaid. Can we take a look at this? And I want this much money. And we, we also said, okay, that seems like a lot. Look at, look at these numbers and do a study, correct?
Compensation study.
The compensation study. Did anybody else in any other departments come to you and ask you and say that they're underpaid and they need a compensation study?
No.
We, we did a compensation study against all departments though.
That, fine.
We looked at all departments.
I, I, just now?
Yeah, the compensation study did all departments.
Did all departments, okay. Well, but what I'm getting at is nobody else came and asked, or they just put their money, they, they just put the, the values in. You, you're never gonna make everybody happy.
Correct.
You're, you're never gonna, um, you know, we could sit here and say, well, let's bring everybody in and ask exactly what they want. We'll just do what they want. I, I, we, we can't. We gotta, we gotta, just like what you and, and, and David said too, we gotta, we need to be able to stand up at town meeting and say, this is why we picked these numbers, because we feel this is what's needed to run the town and to compensate the people. And I'm sorry to either say we, we're, that's how we're gonna keep the people, that's how we're gonna bring people in here to work. I, I, that's what we're gonna have to figure out how to say.
And at eight, we're still actually under the eight point eight, no matter what. And so I, I guess that's.
Dave, I know you got.
I just want everybody to feel fa-, I just.
No, I don't have anything. I'm tired. I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna vote on the motion. I'm gonna say, I don't know. There are three answers in a legal world. There are yes, no, and I don't know. And I'm tired, and I just got this information about this adjustment. At, I just got power back on at four o'clock in the afternoon. I didn't even have a chance to read anything in the back. I had no idea about Habitat, the management, and that's what I feel. I, um.
Okay.
And that's fair. We did take a lot of all of these departments. Um, we did, for me, we did have a kind of a big correction or in the middle of police. I'm surprised that Brandon said no, because we have had requests about adjustments there, and then they got grants. So they're significantly higher on their pay. So what, so what they do kind of doesn't matter.
And that big show in the compensation study, that was all in there.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I, all I'm saying is, across the board for the other employees, I just wanna make sure that they don't feel because a, an adjustment got made here or there, that then now, um, because what some of the people were asking for, whether it was ten percent or nine percent or, or eight percent, at least on, on that, we're still on the low end of really across the board for the cost of living, staying under what the state is. You know, I, I just feel like we do have to be fair to all the employees. Even if we need to make an adjustment with the highway so that we can keep the people we have, or be able to hire new people on if we need them.
Um, uh, so Brandon, what does that, what, what does that put us, I just wanna point this out. Where does that put us in the penny per hundred thousand, the eight percent? In the green?
Seven cents.
Seven cents. And that doesn't include the two cents for the reserve articles. So you, so if those pass, you're at nine percent. And, huh?
Nine cents, not percent.
Nine cents, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, don't say that.
What did I say?
Nine, nine percent.
No, oh, oh, sorry. Nine cents, yeah. Um, so, so, I, I mean, I'm, the motion's on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion? Ray?
Worst case scenario, would we say no? Would we say yes?
There is, there is another thing to consider here, a, and, I, I think it's true. The last three years, we kind of artificially held the tax rate at a stable rate. And, and Brandon tried to tell us last year not to do a couple things, and we did. And I feel that on my part, I made a mistake there because I could have that money now to help artificially lower this nine cents. And now we don't have it. It's gone.
Yes, we do.
Um, no, we don't.
Yes, we do.
No, cause we spent it last year.
No.
Um, so, um, any, any further discussion on the motion? Motion on the floor to set the COLA at eight percent.
I do, I, I do, sorry.
Okay.
I, I just know that if, if, I had to make a choice as a business in holding on to my employees, and I've watched, whether it's ourselves or other businesses, they value who they have. If, if that is the case, then I feel like there's value to that. It doesn't mean overspending. And if, you know, it doesn't mean going too high, but I just feel like that it is important that we do value the people that work for the town. And as a taxpayer, I don't wanna see my taxes.
I don't ever think anybody up here has undervalued them or underappreciated them or gone, you know, I, I don't, I don't understand that even because I've had lots of conversations with the people that work here. I don't ever read them to say, I'm leaving here because you're no good and you treat me rotten. I, I don't get that.
No.
I don't. They, they, they're here because they wanna be here, the, the workplace is pretty good. Yes, there may be a little bit of like, uh, things like this last weekend where there's some hiccups, but not to the point of, I'm outta here, I, you know, I don't get treated well, or I don't get any pay. I think, you did that study in the last three years. It's only exacerbated because of this, this inflation, where everybody here was taken care of adequately statewide, in the, right in the middle of all that, so.
You know, this budget, the budget increases that are in here outside of wages are all inflationary. None, not, the departments didn't come in asking for a lot more money. It, it's almost all inflationary cost.
Well, we did get one change with police. There's a lot of upheaval in dispatch.
But, well, but that was, again, yes, but that's, that was out of our control. So any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of setting the COLA at eight percent, uh, across the board for the town employees signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And any abstentions?
Me.
Me.
So it's three to two, uh, with two abstentions, and the motion carries. COLA's set at eight percent. All right, that takes care of that. Does, Brandon, how much more of this budget discussion is, uh, necessary for tonight?
I would like to just notify the board about the upcoming capital purchase. Capital purchases, and then I'm done.
That's attachment E?
Uh, cor-, it's, yes, attachment E. It's in the packet. Um, so the board requested department input on upcoming capital purchases, and here's a list of those expected purchases. Um, in 2023, we're looking to purchase a police cruiser for thirty-five thousand, which is currently in reserves. And, um, through the grant that we're receiving from, um, the SIU, um, so we don't anticipate any additional tax need for that. Um, we do have a two thousand four BACO that's due to be replaced in twenty-four, twenty-five, with a total cost of two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, a dump truck that was acquired in two thousand and nine that we're looking to replace in two thousand twenty-six for two hundred thousand. A brush truck for the West Side Fire Department that was acquired in two thousand and six, the replacement would be two thousand twenty-eight um, for seventy-five thousand. A forestry truck on the Escutney side that was acquired in two thousand and four, due to be replaced in two thousand twenty-eight for a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then Engine One for the West Weathersfield Fire Department, acquired in two thousand, will be twenty-eight years old, and FY twenty-eight, um, for two hundred and thirty thousand. So those are upcoming capital purchases that are on the radar. Um, I'm sorry, Mike, I'd also like to go to attachment H, which are the reserve requests.
Yep, you're fine.
Um, for the, um, reserve requests, we have, uh, the fire departments and I met, um, and the fa-, fire apparatus acquisition reserve will drop to eighty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars after we remove the down payment for the new fire truck. So they're requesting forty thousand dollars for a special article for that. Um, fire equipment and gear was twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five, but reduced tonight, tonight. Um, down to around fourteen thousand. Um, so we're looking for a special article for twenty thousand for that. And then in fire protection, water supply, um, was twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars before tonight's meeting. Um, we're looking for a ten thousand dollar special article request for that, a total of seventy thousand dollars in special article requests.
Any questions?
Where was the twenty thousand one going to?
Um, that would be firefighting equipment and gear, so PPE.
Any other questions? Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is town representation.
Like I did have something.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
Um, just, I, I just wanted to clarify, on the reserve account for the PPE, obviously it's a special, special article.
Yes.
Um, if that article does not pass, um, when we had present, presented our buzz, budget with Brandon, um, and then came back with, um, asking us to not exceed the ten percent. Um, both departments did have in our budget, that was, uh, in our, in our budgets, that was the first thing that we did take out. Um, uh, of sixty-five hundred, um, six thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars apiece. Um, in our PPE line item, in our regular budget. Um, so with this capital, or this, uh, special article for twenty thousand dollars, um, just for us to take and fulfill three sets a year for fiscal fourteen, um, we will be, uh, we, we, we will be asking to pull thirteen thousand out to fulfill that. Those three sets, uh, for each department next year.
And, and these were items.
So I've just been a little nervous if that doesn't, uh, that doesn't get passed. Um, I originally would like to see, um, at least, I would like to see the thirteen thousand be put back into our original, um, budget for PPE. Um, that way, it's, it's definitely earmarked to not, um, not have a chance of it, um, not passing. Um, that way it's, it's definitely easier mark to not, um, not have a chance of it, um, not pass them with a special article.
All right, all right, let, let me get to that, Josh. Hang on a sec. Um, that's what I was gonna ask. That's, that's thirteen thousand is, is the money you took out when I screwed up and asked for that change in the budgets, correct?
Correct. Uh, we, we.
Okay.
Each department came, came forth with about thirteen thousand.
I, I got it. I got it. Um.
Yep.
Paul, I'm not sure if you were here, but you, uh, you were here that night of that meeting because you and Josh were the ones that pointed out I shouldn't have done that. And I've apologized to everybody, but you haven't been here. So just so you know.
Yeah, no, I.
And, um.
Thank you.
Does the board, yes, that was, that was a mistake on my part. Um, and I regret that. Uh, how does the for, board feel about taking that thirteen thousand and putting it in the fire budget? Do you want, do you, if we do that, Josh, do you want to do away with that article completely, or do you still want to have?
I, I would, I would just do the remaining, um, as a special article. Should be, um, sixty-eight, somewhere around there.
Uh, I, I, well, I'd, I'd do at least ten thousand if you're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Um.
So. So obviously the, the fire equipment and, and gear, um, that, that reserve account.
Josh, Josh, I, I don't want to be rude, but I, I know where we're at, and I'm trying to, I want to try to get this wrapped up as quick as possible.
Yep.
Um, how does the board feel about doing that, putting that thirteen thousand dollars back in the fire budget where the, where the two departments originally had it? Uh, and not doing, and, and, and changing the special article for the fire equipment geared to ten thousand? Now that, that's gonna make the final number like seventy-four thousand if all the articles pass. It, it'll add like four thousand more to that total.
It, it, it's needed one way or the other.
You're gonna need it sooner or later, somewhere.
I mean, I, that's my point. I wanted to see what they wanted for real.
You, you keeping up with this, Brandon? What's, what's consensus though? You want, you, do you want a motion on the board to put that in there? Or what's the consensus on the board?
I think I thought that that was what was being done anyways, is that we were, is there was kind of some miscommunication. And they were gonna put together what would be their real budget. So I guess I just assumed that that was actually being.
And, and it wasn't, and that's what we're clarifying now. And I talked to Josh about this, too, and I talked to Darren privately. Kelly?
I have no problem with it.
Dave?
I'll fund it, make a motion on the table for twenty thousand dollars for ARPA funds for PPE.
Uh, so you want to tr, so you want to transfer twenty thousand dollars for PPE?
Yeah.
Um, and eli, eliminate the tax increase?
No budget.
Do I hear a second?
Done deal.
Paul, Paul seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion to transfer twenty thousand dollars from ARPA to PPE for the two departments to, uh, 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 to, um.
PPE reserve account.
P, P, to put it in the PPE reserve account. Okay?
Only discussion I have is, Dave, thank you. I, I didn't even think of it this late, but thank you.
No.
It is late. I'm trying, trying to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, you, you're obviously okay with that. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Josh, we just voted to move twenty thousand dollars from, uh, ARPA to cover that, so it's done.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take away that twenty thousand dollar firefighting equipment gear special article, and the money's already, will be transferred. Steve's over there with a smile on his face. He likes spending air.
He's tired.
They can buy all that stuff now.
Yeah.
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 Very good fit for it.
Yes.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, because next, a year from now, it's gonna be more money.
Yep.
Probably another eight percent.
You said you were tired, Dave. You still sure?
He is. So, um, and I, uh, Whipple's, okay, so, so that takes care of that. Thank you, Josh. I appreciate you. Uh, Whipple's cap, uh, cabin discussion, I'm gonna move that. We don't need to talk about that tonight. I will give you an update, uh, on the meeting I had. Um, large gathering permit. Do I hear a motion to approve the large gathering permit for, uh, Riberio? Let me see, I gotta get there. I think, if somebody else is there, go ahead with it.
Nobody on there?
Steve, thank you very much. Sorry to keep you so late.
I'll make a motion to accept the application for entertainment permit for Kate Murphy.
I'll second that.
Uh, on the, on what date and time?
On, 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 Friday, June twenty-third and four-thirty PM on Saturday, the twenty-fourth.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. The second's okay with the changes? Yes?
Yes.
Move, move for amendment to waive the fees.
Uh, motion's been made to waive the amendment for the fees. That's a secondary, uh, motion. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to second to waive the fees. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And all those in favor of the motion to approve the permit signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? So both are granted? Um, large gathering warrants?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant for a meeting of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two for general fund payroll of sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eleven cents operating expense. Uh, to include, uh, a stipend, uh, Prince Stipen and Daniel Stipen. Um, so the total operating expense is nine thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. Um, highway fund payroll is six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and nine cents. Operating expenses, five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Solid waste management payroll is twenty-three thousand twelve dollars and seventy-six cents. Operating expense, four thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Library payroll is two thousand one hundred and seven dollars and ninety-five cents and zero operating expense. Uh, fire reserve is under the operating expense for two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. For grant totals, the payroll is forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents, and operating expense of twenty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to accept the warrants, December nineteenth. Uh, any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? None. And any opposition? There's none. Um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you all. Sorry this took so long.
Recording stopped.